I'd like to call to order the work session on the first of February already. Amazing. Time is five o'clock. Everyone is in attendance. We have, um, on the, we have two items on the agenda tonight. And of course, again, I would like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. The first item is a presentation on the general fund FY 2021 and FY 2022 status, five-year forecast and citywide financial policies. Finance manager, budget and research, Lori Wigan-Raw.
Thank you. This is the point when we kind of get started on the next year budget process in terms of a formal work session, we have already met with you to talk about the budget a little bit in your retreat earlier in the year. But today we'll kind of go through, um, first part of the discussion or presentation is kind of a more planning stage setting, kind of giving you a sense of where you are now and moving forward with the budget. And in the first part of the presentation, we'll stop before we're finished with the whole presentation to go through getting some of your input on the financial policies and potential changes to those documents. And then in the second half of the, of the presentation, we'll give you more specific estimates for this current, the current year and next year to kind of help you understand what, what kinds of resources will be available as you're balancing and adopting the FY 22 budget. And we'll also, we'll end that part of the discussion. Julio kind of leaded a conversation about getting some input from you all on your project, priorities for the budget. So in terms of the forecast, um, similar, if you'll remember last year, we did have an economist in who kind of gave you an outlook for the city of Goodyear. There's really nothing to indicate that outlook has changed for us. Um, I think we heard the message of, you know, we're, we're in a good location and we have good economic development activity going on and we do have growth and, and certainly have plenty of room to grow here as well. So we aren't forecasting a recession. We are forecasting some slowing in the rate at which our revenue is growing. So not that our revenue will decline, it will continue to grow, but perhaps a little bit of slowing in the speed at which it grows. And then we're also, as we're going through here, we are essentially showing a recovery from the pandemic through the end of probably the end of the fiscal year next year. Uh, so one of the things that, uh, one of the big, big factors of our growth are residential building activity. We're sharing here, similar information we shared last year. Uh, this is, uh, the dark bars are on a calendar year basis, the number of residential permits that were issued. So it looks a little different than you're used to seeing because this is by calendar year instead of by fiscal year. And that's because the bars that have the slashes in them are a forecast and they're forecasted using the LR schools forecast for the valley wide, uh, growth in residential building permits. So if you look at those forecast bars, they are a little lower than the 2020 bar, the calendar 2020 bar, and that's because for the region, they are forecasting, uh, some slowdown in the, or slight declines in the growth rate in number permits being issued, residential permits being issued. Uh, but as you look at that, even though we're showing there might be fewer issued, the, the bars still show a very high level of, uh, residential building permitting going on in Goodyear so that those forecasts are based on last calendar year actual with the regional forecast applied. And we generally grow a little bit higher than the region. And I, uh, I think I put in the, we had in the council report that December permits were low relative to the prior December. Just got the January information and January more than eclipsed what we lost in December relative to the same month. In fact, I think it's the highest number of permits that we've had in a month. There was one other month last year where we'd issued 204 residential permits. So, uh, we're trending again, we're not seeing a change, a downward trend for us at this point in time. So in terms of the resource assumptions that we're using in the forecast, um, we did last year when the, at the crux of the pandemic, when that interrupted our budget process, we began a process of forecasting or estimating sales tax category by category. We used to just say, hey, ongoing sales tax will grow, hey, 5% or 3%. What we started doing mid last year was looking at the individual categories and a category might be something like retail sales or restaurant and bars or hotel motel. And we did that because we knew some areas would be more seriously impacted by the pandemic. So in moving forward, we will continue to forecast sales tax revenues on that basis. So we're going to continue to do a category by category forecast because several categories are getting large enough that it's worth spending that extra time really looking at them. So in preparing the sale, ongoing sales tax estimates in, for this year, next year and the forecast, we did have to pay a lot of attention to the first, the next two years relative to what happened last year, you know? So if, if construction sales tax was up 200%, we're not going to grow another 50% on top of that, you know? So in, in the case of the ongoing sales taxes, you know, looking at restaurant and bar, how it behaved, we know retail, uh, did better than we expected. But we looked at how things were performing month by month and we prepared our forecast based on a percent growth over the same month in the prior year. As we get into the out years of the forecast, we then applied a two to 5% growth rate on a more stable year, uh, depending on the type of category. In terms of state income tax, we do have a slight timing change. Uh, when they delayed the due dates for income tax returns last year, it moved those due dates into a new state fiscal year, which means we share on income taxes on a two-year delay. Uh, so that meant income tax, we thought we might get in 22, we're really going to get in 23. So we'll have a slightly lower than expected state shared income taxes in 22, but then we'll recover that in 23. And then the other thing I just wanted to call out is, um, the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, we've been watching that revenue. We did get our first payment for this year and it was very low. Um, we had built the budget using the forecast that they had provided us based on their estimate of what would happen with the pandemic. Um, as a result for this year, we basically just, we get two payments a year. Uh, we just doubled what we received in the first payment. We anticipate we'll receive more than that, but we opted to go conservative. And then beyond that, we're using the forecast that they provided that was influenced by the pandemic. For, just to give you a sense of how, how this looks in the forecast, wanted to remind you, uh, so this is a look at retail sales tax revenue. Uh, it does not include the online marketplace since we don't have a good history on that yet. So this is just retail, food for home consumption and large item. And what I want to call to your attention is you'll see the first two kind of medium blue bars, those are actuals for fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20. You'll notice then the dark bar, that's the 21 budget. So we budgeted sales tax, retail sales tax lower than what we actually experienced last year. And that was because of those very conservative estimates we made relative to the pandemic. Uh, so that's why when you look at this year, our estimate jumps up quite a bit from budget. And that's because everything indicates that retail is continuing to come in at very good rates. Um, and we're basically recovering what we didn't budget for plus additional growth above that. Uh, but then you'll see it kind of, uh, the growth rates kind of moderate after that. So just to give you a sense of what the big, big piece of the general fund revenue looks like. This chart, the, in addition to the forecast for residential building permits that we received from the LR school, this is, uh, two other things that we look at from their forecast. There's not a lot of opportunity, uh, forecast available for the metro area. So what is shown here is the darkest line that starts up very high and then, uh, drops down. That's Goodyear's sales tax growth, calendar year to calendar year. So it starts with 18, goes to 19. We, we have, uh, growth in excess of 12% from 18 to 19. Uh, 20 then drops down to where we only had 10% growth over the prior year. So again, these are growing, it's just growing at a slower rate. Uh, and then what I'll, what you're seeing then is for 21 calendar year, we're showing what our estimates look like. So our estimates are down, uh, still assuming growth, but not the kind of rapid growth that we've had. And then we continue to step back up. The orange line that's on there is personal income for the metro regional area. So personal income is the amount of money you take in as a household, uh, that's available for you to spend. Um, and so the, there, the forecast of 18, 19 and 20 are from the forecast, are, are known. 21 shows that, again, they're forecasting a decline in personal income growth rates for the valley and we're almost meeting that personal income growth rate with ours. Um, and then that climbs back up. The lighter blue line is the regional forecast for sales tax or retail sales activity. And you'll see that it's indicating the metro area had significantly lower growth rates than we did for calendar 20. Um, so, and then the rest of the metro area is ju- jumping up a little bit, is jumping up. Um, so it looks like, you know, we're below the forecast for retail, but we're about where the forecast is for personal income in terms of the growth rates we're using. Um, in terms of the one-time resources, uh, again, the bulk of the one-time comes from construction sales tax and from fund balance. We consider, uh, savings and expenditures or higher revenues from one year roll into the next year as one-time resources. Uh, again, construction sales tax and development user fees, we've consistently been conservative in forecasting those. Uh, so there were months last year where we did have, uh, nearly 200% growth over the prior year in construction sales tax. So for the, this, rest of this year, we are forecasting smaller than, lower dollar amounts than we collected in the prior year, the same month as we move forward. Again, that's just to be conservative. Um, and, uh, we'll continue to monitor that and adjust that forecast as we come forward with the manager's budget recommendations. And then for the 22 and the out years, we're again using that 80 to 85% of the prior year as our forecast, which is what we've practiced in the past. And that applies to both construction sales tax and for development user fees. And then fund balance in the forecast period is based on assuming 2% savings and 2% higher revenues in the current year and then the prior year contingency rolling over. Again, those are conservative, we always achieve higher levels than that. On the expenditure side, where we have reflected the mid-year adds that were done this, mid this year, and we've reflected their full year costs next year for the ones that are ongoing in nature. And we've assumed 3.5% base budget growth and that is consistent with what we were experiencing before, uh, this year's budget. And the CIP and the CIP operating costs that we're showing in the forecast right now are based on the CIP that's in effect today. We are in the process of updating the base budget and updating the CIP now. So we don't have new data yet for that, so we're just using what's known. And then asset management is based on the plans that we received in last year's process with, and again, those are in a process of update as well. We have added an additional $2 million to the forecasted asset management contribution for the new facilities plan. If you recall, we've been working on a asset management plan for facilities and that plan is ready to come forward and be introduced as part of the 22 budget process. So the forecast that we're presenting to you is compliant with financial policies. You know, some of the key points are construction sales taxes in at 5.1 million per year based on the current policy. We are maximizing the primary property tax, um, continue to have the 15% general fund contingency, um, mentioned the asset management funds as well and that, uh, we are keeping the forecast, we'll present the forecast to you as well as the information on the 21 and 22 budget, uh, in separate pieces for the ongoing portion of the budget and the one-time portion of the budget. And so with that, because the forecast is just a, it's a gist of a message, it's not, let's get down to the nitty gritty dollars and cents. We're just pro- presenting here the trend of what the forecast looks like. So this presents 23 to 27. The first lighter color bar is projected uses or spending and the darker bar is the projected resources or revenues that will be available. And so for ongoing, we're showing that, yeah, you'll have additional resources above the base budget in 23. Uh, and then 24 and 25 are simp- basically break even years in the forecast. And again, this is using those assumptions I just reviewed. And then 26 and 27, we again have, uh, resources in excess of, uh, uses. Some of what's happening in 24 and 25 are things like dropping off of the O and M contribution by, uh, for station 186. So that drops off and then you take a little while to recover from something like that. And I looked at last year's forecast, 23 and, or 24 and 25 were actually, uh, they've improved, uh, relative to what we presented to you last year, uh, which makes sense, uh, given how we approach forecasting. And then this is the one-time look, it's a little bit more, uh, up and down. Again, we're showing 23 through 27, same thing where the forecasted needs are the first bar and the forecasted resources are the second. You'll see that 23 shows that we're short resources. And then when you get to 26 and 27, the last two years, we have more resources. There's no CIP in those last two years because the current CIP is only five years and so we haven't made an estimate of what would be included. Uh, these will change greatly, uh, as you know, one-time resources become available as we go through the year. Um, and we are, like I mentioned previously, we're in the process of updating the CIP. There are things that may be sitting in 23 that may move forward and be addressed in earlier years, uh, but that's, this forecast becomes the basis for preparing the five-year CIP within our available general fund resources. And then, uh, kind of transitioning into, you know, here's the forecast, we're going to talk a little bit about the financial policies. One of the key financial policies is the portion of construction sales tax that gets allocated to ongoing revenue. You've been using the practice of, we've been providing you, uh, a couple of different averages, the lowest five years average, uh, in the last 10, the last five years average and the last 10 years average. Right now, the policy is set at 5.1 million, that's treated as ongoing revenue. Based on your recent practice, uh, the 5.6 million dollars may be a level that you want to consider as you look at the financial policies as that would be the lowest of these three averages. And then what we wanted to have a conversation about and have your input on are some proposed changes, you know, on the forecast itself as well as some proposed changes to the financial policies. Uh, the specific changes were included in the council report, but I'll just go over them very quickly. One is just a quick correction to say any grant, not just federal grants, should not be used for ongoing purposes. Uh, the other is we have reflected 5.6 million as the, uh, amount of construction sales tax that we treated as ongoing to match, uh, what you've done in the prior year. Um, we've also, um, recommended adding a new policy that doesn't currently exist and that's related to, we do have some areas where we have more than one fund source that could pay for a particular item. A, a simple example would be a capital project. We may have bond funds available that we could use to pay for that capital project or we may have operating funds. And what we're identifying in this policy is levels of, you know, defining how funds are restricted and then recommending that you adopt a policy that says, um, that we should spend the most restrictive eligible funding source first. So in that case where you had a project with a bond, uh, available and operating funds, we'd allocate the bond funds first because they're the most restrictive, you know, they can only be used for what they were issued for, whereas the operating funds are the least restricted, uh, resources that we have. Um, so that's a recommended new financial policy. Uh, the other changes are, uh, kind of clarifying a little bit on asset management now that we've gotten through looking at the facilities plan. Uh, we are kind of clarifying the asset management, uh, policy, adding some information about establishing a minimum threshold for creating a separate asset management fund, uh, because we do have some asset management plans out there for like the finance department where they got a piece of equipment they have to replace every five, once every five years. We don't create a separate fund to prepare for those. So there are, there is work involved with creating a fund, keeping track of a fund separately. And so we're recommending that at a minimum, the average annual requirement to create a new fund would be $250,000. And then the, and just a clarification in the enterprise-related asset management to say that they're also using their CIP to budget their asset management plan items. And then we're just proposing rewording to the strategic plan-related goal or policy to match the current practice of just having a triennial plan, uh, where you, and then you receive updates twice a year. And so that's the point where we wanted to give you a chance to ask questions and maybe give us some feedback on your thoughts about how we should proceed with financial policies. The plan is to come back to you on February 22nd to act on the financial policies so that we can use those to, uh, develop the budget.
All right. Who would like to start? Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I was gonna do the same thing, but, uh, no one else is gonna go on.
Go, go ahead, Bill.
Okay. I have three. I don't know that they're all underhand pitches, but I think they're pretty simple. Um, so the first one on, uh, slide three, you don't have to go back to it.
Okay.
Um, we talked about, um, forecasts. I'm curious what the thought process is on, um, the economy in general has received a number of boosts from the COVID relief acts and there's obviously the other one being proposed. Those at some point are going to come to an end. Has anyone looked at what does that cliff look like? Is there any anticipation in the finance world about what is that, what does that look like?
You know, I, given that there's ongoing discussion of more, uh, assistance, it's, there's not a clear direction there and clearly Goodyear is behaving differently than what we're seeing a lot of the rest of the economy. You look at some of the information we've seen on how other cities have fared through this and you see they've lost revenues. Uh, so I think in the case of Goodyear, I, I do, that's why we've reduced the growth rates on the sales tax revenues, assuming that some of that experience that we've had in the last year has been people at home spending money on home improvements instead of on gas and those types of things. So haven't seen anything, you know, that we can point to and say, that's the path that we should take.
So we're not, we're not expecting a cliff?
No, we're not expecting a cliff. We're expecting we won't have 20% growth.
Right. We're expecting a slowdown, but not a fall off the edge.
Correct.
And so I think that, I think that's important for the public to understand as we're looking as, as we look forward, um, with some assuredy that, uh, we're not, we're not seeing that. Now, the individual home may be looking at things completely different, but, um, I think we've all been surprised by the growth and the, or at least the sustainment of where we looked at in revenue and, uh, spent a week with a bunch of people from around the country and they said, well, how'd you guys fare? And I'm like, well, it's actually up. You know, we're up and what do you attribute that to? So it's, it was an interesting conversation anyway. Um, second question, um, relates to, um, the governor's proposed income tax reduction. And what does that feel like in state shared revenues? And has that been included in these? Cause I know that came up at kind of the 11th hour as you guys were preparing.
Right. And so it is not incorporated here, it's not an official, uh, legislative action or proposal yet. Um, and again, remember income taxes shared two years in arrears. So I think it would, uh, and I, I might be off by a hundred thousand or so. You know, in general, it's about 500,000 the first year, then a million, then 1.5. And so if they did that, it would be 24.
24, 25, 26.
So out in those years where we're showing that we'll have resources, uh, that's where that will be hitting. Um, and so, and the good thing is if it happens, we can prepare for it, we'll know it's coming and we can plan for it in future forecasts.
Okay, that's good to know. And finally, the, uh, slide 13, now it would, if you could go back to that one. The revenues that were, that we're seeing here, um, and I'm assuming, so correct me if I'm wrong, you're suggesting for this next fiscal year that we go from 5.1 to 5.6, is that correct?
That's what we're proposing, given prior practice.
Yeah, given where we're at, and I realize I've been the, the anchor on this one as you've dragged it through the sand. Um, if we look at the 10-year average at 8.7, which is pretty significant, I, I debated once you sent this information out a week ago, with these optimistic numbers and where we're at, is this the place if we were to have a discussion about eliminating or significantly reducing the food, the grocery store tax? Is this the place that we could make up that revenue? Uh, that's lost and balance it out? Because I don't think, if, if I read the charts correctly in the manager's report last week, I think it's about 1.8 million.
Yep.
Is that?
That sounds right. I mean, I was just trying to find that piece of paper.
And 1.8, if that's the number, moves this to 7.4, which is under the 8.7, which is well under the five-year average. And if we anticipate that growth is going to remain that way, is that a way to quote unquote, make up that lost revenue while returning something to the homeowner or the taxpayer? Groceries, I'm just going to make, make my political statement, but groceries are not optional. Uh, going out to dinner and buying a car and that kind of stuff is at times optional. Certainly grocery shopping is not. So, um, I know council member now.
We've had lots of discussion on that.
Legislator or, uh, you know, Osborne and I, uh, a number of years ago pushed for this with the idea that perhaps that wasn't the time. And I don't know when the time is, but this is a pretty optimistic forecast. And if we look at using construction sales tax in this fashion, I'm going to ask the question, is now the time?
Certainly the council can entertain that. I will, um, the, the, and I, you know, I don't have a personal position one way or the other on that. I, I will share you that the, the food for home consumption tax does grow with population and inflation. So it's, one of your policies calls for a stable diverse tax base. Um, as you can see from these forecasts, I think, and just looking at the chart, we're forecasting, again, using these conservative approaches, that your can, general fund share of construction sales tax will drop into the neighborhood of 12.5 million a year. So they, you will be cutting into your one-time money, uh, not that one-time funds, we're going to present later, something to show that one-time funds this particular year are, are available. Uh, but the forecast does show that there's not going to be as many one-time funds moving forward. So you, you've got to balance the. So you've got to balance the ongoing versus the one-time, but it's certainly something that staff can explore and bring back to you as we go through the budget process is what that would look like.
And it's the reason that we came sort of to the degree of not accepting it, it's stable. It's there for any emergency that happens. And we're making all these broadcasts, but you just don't know what the next one is. You can't go back and ask for the tax again. Once you do it, it's gone. And so I think the majority of us back then, I can't speak for everybody, felt that this is our one tax, it's very stable and we can depend on it.
Well, if I can just respond to the one thing that Lori said is yes, it's going to grow as population grows. Much like, I'm sure Brandon advises young, very young clients, if you get a raise, put some of that immediately into your savings and spend what you need to, because you don't have it today. We don't have it today. We don't have the growth from 15 years from now, we don't have that today. So if we stop it, we'll find it in another source. And I would agree, if we go into a community and we advise, we always say, don't give up what you have. But we're also not talking about tax on grocery stores. Arizona is one of the few that tax grocery store money differently than they tax anything else. So it's definitely a philosophical discussion, you know, I, I keep going back to, and what rattled around in my head for this was in '08, I'm sorry, '09, we raised the general sales tax to 3%. We've reduced the grocery store tax by a half a cent those two years in a row, and I think 12 and 13.
It was around that.
Yeah, we all were here. I mean, I look at, you know, just about everybody was here. And we reduced it a little bit at that time, and I think we're down to 2% now. Is that where we're at?
Yeah, 2%. I did want to let you know that, so that, because we're working with a fact that's not right, is for last, for FY '20, we collected 4.3 million dollars in food for home consumption tax. So I wanted to get that before we got too much further.
No, I, that's obviously a big difference between 1.8 and 4.2.
Joe, can we stop there so I can get some, let's get feedback from the council. Joe? If you don't mind, just want to get.
You know, I've always been a little hesitant, you know, when we use our one-time money for ongoing, but I understand the average and I can probably live with a 5.1 because, you know, it's down there. I know if something, all of a sudden, if the state comes down with a idea to go back to taxing sales tax on, on things, that disappears real fast. And I know we have enough reserves on the one-time to probably cover that much, but I wouldn't want to go above that, only because that's the conservative nature. As far as food for, for home consumption, you know, for me, it, you, you know, you look at Phoenix when they got rid of it, created a budget problem, if I'm not mistaken, the year afterwards when they hit a slide and, once it's gone, it's gone. And, and I understand it, I don't know what the mixture is right now. If, if you have a $200 food bill, what, 60% of that's probably going to be taxable anyway? That's your paper goods. So if you get 120 there, that would be actually taxed the food, and at 2%, what's that, $2.40 or $2? I'm not sure on the math on there. But my point is, for that little bit that goes into that 4 million or whatever number you had thrown out there, there's a lot that goes back into the community, whether it's roads or our subsidies for our parks, and the new thing that we're opening up now in the summertime, which is going to help bring those fees down. So I, I think the offset is going to a good place, so I, I prefer keeping it the way it is. That's just my own two cents worth, and I can probably live with a 5.6, but I wouldn't want to go any higher than that.
Sherry?
First of all, thank you, and so, Mike, I turned you off.
Thank you, and you're going to be missed.
No, thank you.
So I wish you well, first of all, that's the most important thing, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is about our lovely Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. I know you answered part of it when you said you took the very little bit we got and, and just kind of doubled it for the year. How is the fact, and I just heard a blurb on the radio that I think it's the Indians, the Cleveland team is not going to allow fans in, or how is that going to affect our revenues if spring training either doesn't go off or doesn't go off even near normal?
In terms of our direct spring training revenue, whatever, you know, we have assumed a reduced spring training revenue, but we haven't assumed zero attendance. So we could have another several hundred thousand dollars of lost revenue if there's no spring training at all. In terms of, you know, one of the industries that we still have down on our forecast is hotel motel, because there won't be that type of, you know, even if, you know, whatever level of spring training is permitted, more than likely, it won't be people coming from out of town. So we're, you know, we're prepared for the hotel motel to remain low and have built that into the forecast already.
Okay, yeah, because I know there's some secondary spending at restaurants, hotels, merchandise that goes into that as well. So that's, thank you for getting those conservative estimates. I, I understand where, where Bill is coming from. I, I think you really want to do stuff for people. I get it, I'm self-employed and I really haven't had much to do since March, when they closed just about everything. So the people out there saying that we're sitting up here making these decisions, I get them, you know? But when we talked about this before, and I'd want to get an update on this, we talked about, and we had statistics run on how much it costs for a person or for a month, and it was like a dollar 15 or something, or less than that a month. And so if we can maybe do something for our citizens with that money in the aggregate, like what Joe was saying, you know, to help people, or maybe at one time, like one time we ran, we rolled back the property taxes for just a year, the secondary for a year, you know, I think I'm more favor on that than the food tax. When you actually look at your whole grocery bill, I think people might be looking at that bottom line that says this is the tax you pay, but this isn't the whole tax you pay. Our city portion is really tiny, ours county and all that other, and then you pay, still pay it on medical devices, you still pay it on, you know, cleaning and, and everything else you need. And anyone who's gone to the grocery store knows everything has gone up and a lot of those cleaning supplies, but this isn't going to give people a break here. So I love the thought, I think it's a good thought and something that, you know, possibly another area that we could look at and maybe at the retreat or something, come up with some other ideas how to help our citizens with the one-time monies. Again, I agree with Joe about using the ongoing and the one-time, I don't like mixing those because I think we're setting ourselves up. Nobody last March, or last February, if we go back to February 1st last year, nobody thought we were going to be a, a year out. Even last March, when we came back from the League of Cities, everyone's like, it's going to be by summer. And then it's fall, and now it's winter, and now it's, well, maybe 2022, you know, things will be back to normal. So I'm not in the confident point to start lowering anything now, especially if it's like very minimal. But I would like if we have some extra one-time monies to see what we can do as a one-time break. That's just where I am. I think it's a, I, I really think your heart's in the right place, you know, and going to the grocery store and, and stuff, I, I get you, but I don't think the figures that we came up before were like a dollar 20 or something like that a month. And I don't think that's going to be the cost. So that's just my thoughts, but if we can think of something else as a group, I'm all for. Any ideas, you know? There's nothing wrong about trying to help people out. I, I love that.
Brandon?
Yeah, so it talks about the one-time. I'm okay with the 5.6. I, I guess I get worried when we're using one-time for, for, for bigger law, ongoing, ongoing-type projects. So I like the conservatism of the, the 5.6. I know the 10 years, it's been a great 10 years for, for, for a lot of people other than, other than this last year, but everything's rebounded so quickly, at least, at least the stock market-wise, but in our sales tax revenue and everything with the city. So, yeah, and I know before we were more conservative because we had 2008 in there as well, so. But yeah, I'm okay with the, still being conservative and doing the 5.6 versus the 5.1. Everything else, like I said, I do appreciate you putting this together. I, I'm okay to entertain also looking at what it looks like for sales tax for, for food and how we compare to other, other cities as well, but I'd just like to look at all the facts, like, like Sherry was talking about as well. Yeah, I like the policies, using the restricted, restrictive money first, that just, that just makes sense to me as well. Use that restricted dollars for what they're for as much as possible, so we can, can free up the other monies that we have. So, so yeah, and then the asset manage, can you explain that to me again? You're saying, we already have asset management programs, you're saying to add another 250 to a bigger asset manage, management pot or to a certain, is there, is there, and you said you have a new, a new fund? So I was just curious, I know we have asset management programs for, for vehicles and for asphalt and buildings and things like that. I was just curious what that 250 was again?
So the asset, we set up separate funds. So the way we manage asset management on the general fund side of the organization is that departments prepare a 10-year plan of the assets that they need to replace. Fleet's a good example to use, they do the forecast, all the vehicles. That plan may have years where we're replacing three fire apparatus and they may need $6 million in that year, but then the next year they might need a million and the year after that too. And so what we do is we figure out the 10-year average that they require, and we put that amount of general funds into its own fund that would only be used for fleet replacements. And so what, what we're saying here is, as we're moving forward with asset management, we do have departments that have plans where we don't create a separate fund to pre-fund it, because we're kind of pre-funding these future peaks with these funds. And so what we're saying is for a small department that doesn't have a lot of assets, we want to set some kind of amount that they would need. So if the fund's 10-year average was 500,000 a year, you know, if we had some department come along and they, their asset management plan has grown to 300,000 a year, we would then say, well, according to this policy, it would be appropriate for us to create a separate fund to pre-fund that department's needs or that program's needs. You know, but if it's only, you know, for example, what we did with police a few years ago, they had one high-dollar item in their asset management plan, which was a radio system replacement, and we were putting aside, you know, a million dollars a year, you know, or whatever it was, for many years, building up a fund balance to get to 10 years from now. But the rest of their assets were only about 85,000 a year. So what we recommended with that plan was, instead of having a plan that's just trying to get to one thing, put that in the CIP and then eliminate the asset management fund for the police department and just increase their base budget by $85,000 a year, so that they can pay for that other stuff, like replacing, you know, K-9 equipment or replacing, you know, radar or tasers or those types of things. So we, so that's what we're trying to get to here, that there's some, you know, the fund should have to be, to create a whole brand-new fund in the accounting system, takes some work and some time, and we should create a floor before we do that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you for the clarification. I just, was just curious around that. But yeah, overall, yeah, I think it's great and we're going to miss you when you retire, so.
Thank you.
Maybe can bring you back for something like that, contractor or something, so. But yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you for putting this together as well.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Laura?
Well, Lori, I want to add my thanks. We were both from the city of Phoenix, and although I didn't know you then, you were always so legendary, and I was so delighted when I got here and found that you were here. And thank you for the work that you do and how you make the budget so just simple and, and helpful and, and understandable, and, and I, I so appreciate Goodyear's long history of a conservative fiscal approach. I think that has definitely stood us in good stead. And I was at Phoenix when, during the, the recession when the food tax hit, you know, that, that whole issue, and it was so devastating to the city. And so that's the only context that I have to refer to it was there. I think, I feel a continuing degree of uncertainty. I think that we have fared so well, we've been so blessed through this year, but even though we don't forecast a cliff, I think there's just something that says, I still don't know what's coming. And like it's been said, once you give up the food tax, it's, it's gone forever. But I think it's important for us to continue to talk about it and keep that discussion. And I liked Sherry's approach is when we talk about it, the budget and, and the funds and where, where it makes sense to roll back or give back than looking at it holistically. But I think food tax should be an ongoing discussion. So I, I appreciate the, the thorough information that has been provided, and if, if it all goes as it planned, we're, we're, we're looking really good.
Molly?
Thank you. Lori's ready for me. I've already talked to her. So Lori, I do, can you give us the amount of money that Azteca gave us? You said it was very low.
Yeah, it was, it was, this year, the first payment was slightly less than $200,000. So it was like, I think.
It's really low.
Yeah.
Well, they'll make it up if they can, right?
Yeah, well, they're, it's a formula-driven payment, and we do anticipate it will be higher later in the year, because they have obligations, they have to fully fund.
Yeah.
Before they can give money to us.
You're right.
So we anticipate that it will certainly be higher than that, but.
Wow.
And they are preparing another estimate for us.
Great.
Just don't have that yet.
Right. I'm so sorry that they didn't make their revenue. They're probably as sorry as we are too, because we miss all of the spring training, we miss all of the visitors, and the tourist is just such a big business for all of the Phoenix area, and it's so critical. So I agree with everyone regarding the 5.1, I'm comfortable with that. I'm also comfortable with 5.6 because I like to have money in the bank, and I want a lot of money in the bank. And then if I need to spend it, I can spend it, but I can't always get it if it's not there. So I'm very comfortable with that. And I'm also, I have a question regarding an asset. Does fire, this is probably wrong to say this, but does fire budget for the ladder truck in the asset management plan, or does that come right in their budget? Because we, we're going to need a ladder truck with our new city hall and our Class A office building, and now we've got hotels right here, and we don't have a ladder truck in Goodyear.
So what we budget for in asset management is the replacement of existing.
A big ladder truck? Not like Avondale?
I remember the big.
I haven't seen it. Where is it? Where is it?
I don't want to take, I don't want to take the Chiefs Thunder, but it's at Station 184, and it was like $3 million.
I haven't seen it. I saw Avondale last night go by my house, and I said, oh, I want one of those.
We got one. And no offense to Avondale, but ours is better.
Okay. So anyway, well, back to that.
But to clarify, if, if when it's time for us to replace that ladder truck, that will be funded in asset management. And so Fleet has a plan that says, okay, this ladder truck has a seven-year life, so seven years from now, we're going to have to replace it. So the asset management funds are just for replacing assets we already own.
Okay.
If we, if you wanted a new ladder, to, because we're getting a city hall.
Sure.
That would come in as a supplemental request using one-time funds.
All right.
Because we'd be adding to the assets of the city.
And the supplemental one-time funds are the extra money that we have just sitting there that we could spend it for if we wished.
Yeah.
And then, then it would go back on the asset management plan to be.
Replaced whenever it comes to.
Eventually down the road.
Yes.
Okay. So it's kind of like a revolving door, sort of.
Yeah, so the asset management fund is, it is a, you know, so there are some vehicles that are replaced every five years. So you'll see the same vehicle twice in 10 years in the asset management plan. So it's a predict the life of the asset and then plan to replace it in that year.
Well, that's, the asset management plan is so critical to keep our assets up and running so that we're not piecemealing stuff and we're not able to, to provide the services that we have. My last question is, I'm a little, a little not concerned, but I, I really don't have all the confidence that you do, that there's not a cliff going to come? I think there's a little cliff coming, and I just think we need to just be really conservative and continue that way, because we can always, I liked your approach of, of helping us come back when we had more money than we thought, when we budgeted what we thought we had and we were very conservative, and then the tax revenues and construction tax came in, a lot higher than we had planned with the retail sales tax, the food tax, all of that, and we were able to do more things with it. So I would hope that we could continue that, and I'm sure that's in your policy, if I read it right.
That, that particular, the concept of over and above the 15% contingency is not anywhere in policy. What's in policy is that we will only spend one What's in policy is that we will only spend one-time money on one, that will only spend ongoing money on ongoing things.
Right.
Um, but the, in terms of creating an additional contingency above that, I would say that that would be an annual budget process type decision.
So we'll have to have that conversation every year if it's appropriate.
Yeah. Or you, or you could direct that you want a financial policy that creates a second type of contingency or increases the contingency with plans that you could use it. I mean, there's ways to get there.
Okay. But it was just so wonderful to have it this year because it's not something we always have had in the past. It was wonderful. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm very satisfied with 5.6 million, the lowest years. I feel secure with that. Who would have thought that we would have gone up and down through the years with one disaster like going through now? And you, you wouldn't predict that. I mean, nobody thought we'd go back a century or two centuries and have some kind of illness like this. And so I, I like this. I, I like the feeling of being secure. So I'm with the council. Most, most of them feel that way, I think. All right. Anything else?
We've got more though, right?
All right. Ready to move on to the next part?
You can start now. Thank you.
So now do, we'll just kind of go over, uh, these are, we shared some estimates with you at the retreat earlier in the year. Um, and so these are updated from that and we will obviously continue to update throughout the budget process. Uh, but this is just kind of a graphical depiction of what the revenue estimates look like or the resource estimates look like, uh, for the current year and for next year compared to this year's budget. So the first light colored bar is, uh, what was budgeted for this year. The second dark green bar is what we're now estimating for this year. And then the, um, and in some cases, if it's an actual, it's solid. If it's an estimate, it's hashed there. And then the orangey color bar, the last bar is what our estimates are for next year's budget. And so the first thing I'll focus on is the fund balances, the first group. You'll see that that fund balance is high. Um, the budgeted fund balance was high, uh, kind of as a reminder. Included in that fund balance, uh, were, um, some significant large unusual capital projects. So there was still about, uh, 50 million in funding in the fund balance associated with completing the civic square and the recreation campus projects. So it was unusually high because we're doing some very unusual projects. Um, and then also to remind you, in that fund balance that we had budgeted, there was also the normal contingency and the special contingency that the councilwoman was just discussing. The reason for the increase in this year's fund balance, uh, beginning balance primarily was, uh, underestimating the revenues, uh, as we proceeded through the pandemic. About, about $17 million of a 20 million increase in the fund balance was associated with ongoing sales tax and construction sales tax and development user fees. Again, construction sales tax and development user fees we normally are conservative with anyway. So it was bigger than we normally, it was a higher amount than we normally anticipate, but it was an unusual circumstance we were dealing with. Uh, the next bars are the sales tax. Again, we already talked about how last year's actuals were higher than this year's budget. Therefore, the estimates are higher, uh, than, than budget, uh, by quite a jump. We're kind of recovering that, that, uh, funding that we lost. You can see just the slight change in state shared sales tax where the neck, the dark, the orangish bar is a little bit lower than the prior year bar because we talked about that, uh, delay in some of that income tax sharing. And then again, development user fees, uh, we forecast, uh, uh, lower in the second, in next year than we are this year. And then other, kind of the reason the others are up, we are, like I said, we're assuming as to back at what they were forecasting before in this forecast. That may not be what we come back to you with, uh, when we come back in the budget process, but that's what was included here. In terms of expenditures, again, the first set of bars are the base budget. You normally don't see a big increase in the base budget, uh, from the, the estimate for this year to next year. Again, that's a result of the mid-year adds that we did this year, being reflected at the full year cost next year. So that's the primary reason why that bar is, is higher than you might normally see it grow from year to year. Um, and then the balance is, um, based on, you know, one time basically comes through the supplemental budget process, although there's a few things in the budget. Primarily, uh, funding for economic development and the city manager's contingency that are one-time on go and that we put in the base budget. The reason the other at the end is high in the current year is because of those capital projects I just mentioned, they are actually, uh, in that other piece there. Uh, because we transfer them, those resources to a separate fund. So in terms of the dollars and cents, um, this is kind of a busy slide and to focus you on the, the end. This is the ongoing general fund. We're showing the revenue in a little bit more detail. Again, this shows the 5.1 million for the construction sales tax. And if it, if that would potentially change to 5.6, uh, based on what you do on February 22nd. And again, these numbers will change. We're reviewing revenue estimates now. But we're showing that for 22, the last column, we have about $9 million of resources over and above our base budget. And, but we also in the operating cost forecast for capital projects, we know there's 4.7 million dollars, an estimated 4.7 million dollars in full year operating costs primarily associated with a fire station and with the civic square. Uh, so if you take that off the top, it leaves another 4.3 million dollars for ongoing, uh, type expenses.
Joe has a question.
Make sure I'm reading it correctly. Is it saying for new bodies, new positions, new general fund expenditures, you have 4.3 million dollars estimated currently?
That's what we're saying. The 4.3 is what you would have available for supplementals.
Okay.
To add to the 22 budget.
For ongoing supplementals.
Ongoing supplementals over and above.
Cause the other 4.7 is committed to expenditures related to capital projects that are underway.
Yep.
Where does the money fit into here for the money we were setting aside for future, uh, fire stations? Where's, you know, those little reserve funds we were setting at?
The way we handled that in the forecast, because it almost zeros out this in 22 because that's when the big, the last of the big expenses that we had in the forecast come on. So in the forecast, we took out the set aside and we just put those costs in and those revenue reductions in. So we showed that without. So we would come back, when we come back with the manager's budget recommendation, we would come back with another item for the, what needs to go be dealt with in terms of the operating costs set aside. At this point, it wouldn't be, uh, significant, although we do have the O and M, or the O and M revenue from Newland that would be there, um, and then a few other capital projects. But we also have a hefty number of capital project requests, uh, that may be bringing some new operating costs into that forecast.
But it's covered in there. We're really looking, and again, these are preliminary and understand that there's a lot of moving pieces out there is the 4.3 million.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. No, no more questions on this?
And then on the one-time side, again, I talked a little bit about our increase in our beginning fund balance. All of that moves into the one-time side of the equation because we don't consider that to be an ongoing revenue source. Some of it was generated from ongoing revenues and that's part of the reason the 4.3 million is available. Um, but essentially with the existing CIP and our current financial policies and then including asset management with that additional 2.2 million, the 2 million that we've added for facilities. Again, that's still being reviewed. So that's a rough estimate. We're looking at, uh, about 43.7 million dollars in one-time resources. Um, and then if there's no specific questions about this piece of it, I'll turn it over to Julie to talk to you about, uh, using those resources.
I, I think we're ready. There's no nodding your heads or hands up. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, um, to talk in round numbers, we will have, it appears nearly $45 million available in one-time resources going into this next budget cycle. So I wanted to begin the discussion with council about the potential buckets where those dollars could be utilized as we begin to program the budget. I think off the top, just as, uh, Joe had pointed out, we have 4.3 that looks like it'll be available for ongoing needs. But on an annual basis, we also have one-time needs that we need to program during the budget. So if we were to, uh, just off the top, take between five and 15 for the sake of argument tonight, just say we have $10 million, uh, that we would have set aside for one-time needs as we go into next fiscal year's budget. Uh, there's still $35 million available. So we wanted to, um, discuss with council at least two of the big buckets that are available to you. One would be infrastructure. Um, certainly as a growing community, we have identified needs, uh, for infrastructure. And the benefit of using one-time dollars on infrastructure is it puts money into the local economy through, through jobs. Uh, we have been talking about the, uh, build out of Camelback Road from, uh, the 303 to at least the Goodyear border. And we'll be having a work session towards the end of the month on more specifics. Uh, but certainly that project is early indication coming in about $55 million uh, before the cost sharing with the other agencies that we would be working to partner with. Uh, but that's certainly a big lift. And so, uh, you know, one possibility would be to put, um, money towards the funding of, of Camelback Road. Another option under infrastructure that we've talked about amongst staff is that we had planned to issue, uh, geo debt for the street infrastructure associated with civic square. And that comes in at 7.8 million dollars. If we were to instead use cash to pay for that street infrastructure, we could reserve that bond capacity for a future project, for example, the Cotton Lane Bridge. Uh, so we could retain that bonding capacity if we instead utilized cash for, uh, the civic square improvements. Also, another potential bucket that we can discuss is debt reduction. Um, you know, I think that's come up as we've talked about the unfunded liability in our pension systems. Uh, current numbers are about 38 million. Let me double check. Yes, about 38.7 million dollars. We have an unfunded liability between the two public safety pensions. Um, it's not recommended that you buy that down completely, uh, because of the way the actuarial studies work. But, uh, certainly we could do, you know, something in the, the neighborhood of 10 to 25 million dollars safely and, and buy down that debt if that was a council priority. But I wanted to also note that we have some economic development projects that we have talked about, um, putting in infrastructure and going into debt through bonding, uh, to, uh, prepare that infrastructure. And so another potential use would be the avoidance of debt, um, by, by using it on some of those economic development locates. So these are some high level buckets we can talk about. I mean, you can see that, that 35 million goes very quickly when you're talking about, you know, projects of this scope and debt of that magnitude. But I also don't want to take away from any discussion that, um, council may choose to have. I know Sherri, you mentioned, um, you know, how to help the, the community and that's still an ongoing conversation. Uh, just as a reminder, we did a recent update in a manager memo that we've had 23 Goodyear residents apply, uh, for utility rent or mortgage assistance through our program. And we have 12 applications pending. So we are starting to see that program utilized a little bit more. We started with $150,000 in that account. We've distributed, um, almost 32,000 and so we still do have $118,000 remaining. Um, you know, now of course those eviction moratoriums are still in place. And so I don't know when we're going to see the, the height of that need, but we're certainly prepared to make sure that funding is available for our residents, um, in need. Um, but as we're looking to put together next year's budget, uh, really wanted to begin the conversation with council on, on where you'd like to see us prioritize those one-time revenues.
Joe?
Is there a certain dollar amount, I know in the civic square funding project, we were supposed to put aside so much money. So a lot of cash was going into that project where we wouldn't have to fund is, and I don't recall top of my head what, what that number was, but is that already accounted for? Or is that part of this 45 million that we have to pull out to help bring that, that cost down?
The civic square project has already been completely funded.
So that, that, that we don't have to worry about then. Okay. All right. That, that's good. The other question on the, uh, um, public, I guess pension, the unfunded liability. If you put 10, 10, 10 million or 25 million or whatever it is down, how much does that actually reduce our cost on an annual basis? I guess my question is, is if you eat up all that cash towards that, that you could use for other funds to help other people.
He's figuring it out.
I'm just, okay.
I believe Doug's pulling up that information for us.
Yes, go ahead.
So, and Doug, while you're, this does not require math. I thought that we already have a financial plan in place to cover that financial debt. So it's not a, it's not an unplanned event for us. So this isn't a panic moment. I think we've got to be really careful when we talk about unfunded liability pay down like it's a, oh my God moment for the city. We've known about this. We've got a plan for it. And if I'm wrong, please speak up, but, um, I think we have to be very cautious on how we frame this.
No, you're absolutely right, Vice Mayor. Uh, the plan is in place. It's a, uh, and you'll actually be adopting the policy. Once again, it's an annual requirement, uh, at the next council meeting. But it's a, I believe we're now at a 16-year buy down of it. So it is just funding that unfunded liability through our normal rates that are planned and programmed into our, all of our five-year forecasts. So this is not an emergency measure. It is a, um, we noticed we've got a lot of cash and it is definitely something where we could benefit from.
Well, the reason why I asked that question is to piggyback on what the Vice Mayor was saying there is I'm not sure that would be a wise use of 10 to 25 million if we already have a plan in place. That's what I was trying to get to there, Vice Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess how much savings, if any, is there to do that to us? I guess you're probably looking up the numbers still, but yeah, if, if it's not a bang for the buck, then there's no reason to not just follow the plan. But if there is a way to save, to save interest or to save, save money somehow, to be smart with it, that's fine. I don't want to necessarily pay down all of it. It doesn't make necessarily any sense if the actuary tables don't, don't, don't support it. But if there is a way to save for future, just like we're doing with the, the go, the geo debt for the, um, street infrastructure. If we can, um, offset or if there's a possibility. So I, I appreciate you guys looking at it, whatever that looks like. Like I said, I don't know if it's worth it or is it lemon versus squeeze or however you guys. But the, um, but yeah, and then going forward, I also like to see.
Wait, hold up.
Oh, good.
Let's give him a minute without.
He's doing the math.
He's doing the math? Okay.
You got it. I'm not going to give it to anybody else.
The math's more complicated than I figured it was going to be from this study. Uh, what the actuarial report shows it is, it shows a reduction of the contribution rate for every $1 million that you would do. The contribution rate for next fiscal year is 32.89%. Every $1 million drops it by approximately 1%. Um, so a $10 million would drop our rate from 32 down to about 22. So it would be pretty significant operational savings in the general fund. And then there would, um, also be the, uh, interest earnings with that cash being in the fund as well.
So basically you'd use one-time dollars and you'd gain ongoing.
Yeah.
Ongoing capacity.
Yeah. So depending what that math looks like, wherever, wherever it makes sense, I, I'd like to entertain that, which you brought up here. So thank you for that. And then I do like the infrastructure, um, and the, and the street infrastructure for the new civic square. I'm also really interested in Sereville Road too. I know Camelback is the new thing, uh, with the cross dock things coming there. But we've been also talking about Sereville for a very long time as well. So I'd love to see that. I know we, I, we have lots of projects we could do, but I just feel that Sereville is also a truck route. And it's, it's been languishing a lot longer than Camelback Road has. But yeah, so just, just a thought. I know it's a heavy lift with the other, uh, organizations with, uh, Camelback Road though. So a lot more, um, uh, IGAs or other just discussions with Litchfield and the county. But, um, but yeah, I just want to, I was, I'm just curious about Sereville Road as well in the future. So. Other than that, yeah, I think I'm good with the rest of ideas. I don't know if, I don't think we're deciding today, but I do like these options. So thank you.
Sherri?
Thank you very much. I know also when we talked, we talked about some of the community funding that we could maybe see where more in certain areas that might be needed. And I think that sounds like it's already on your radar. So I appreciate that. With regard to the PSPRS, um, it sounds like we do get a little bit more of a payback on that one. That's not something like once we pay it down, we're not going to incur this, it's not going to grow again, is it? it's not going to grow again, is it?
So I think that's a complicated question, but I mean, it goes all the way back to the, you know, the different upticks and downturns in investment strategy, funding strategy. I believe that they are on the right path. I believe that they have some good staff that are working for them now, and they're working through some really difficult issues. So I believe they're on the right track, but this is a long-time coming problem. This has been, you know, 20, 25 years probably in the works to get us to this point. So we do believe that once some of that unfunded liability goes away, that we'll see the rates stabilize. When you look at the rates that we pay, for example, into Arizona State Retirement System compared to the Public Safety Retirement System, you know, one is just much healthier than the other. And so, you know, this is, you know, as many have pointed out, we have a program. It's not an emergency. It's just if we have some, you know, cash, I think that we could spend it all on infrastructure. And that would be just as legitimate a decision as if we wanted to do a split and do some infrastructure and some debt payment. It was more just to take the temperature and see what council would prefer.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure if we do go that way or part of it to that way, that it's not like you pay off the credit card, then it charges back up again. So it's not like a never-ending cycle. So it sounds like they've got it, they're ducks in a row. I do like what Brandon said about Saraville, because I know we've gotten a lot of residents there that have really been complaining. Camelback Road also is apparently going to be a need, depending on the community, the other partners there, if that's something that is even doable, if everybody is on the same page. Because I know that's not just on us to figure out. And then the Civic Square. So if we paid for the Civic Square outright, that would allow more bonding for economic development, right? So if you did that way?
No, it's specifically to road infrastructure. So the thought process would be we would save that capacity for a cotton bridge expansion.
Okay, so that would go for something else? Okay. I think they're all... I don't have heartburn on any of them, you know? I'd like to see what you guys come back with. I think they all have very valid areas to work with. I guess we look, you know, you guys figure out where we can get them a bang for the buck? And, you know, if we could see what that portion of Saraville will cost to compare to see if that's something doable or not doable, or if we can move that up somehow. So thank you.
Laura?
I think you've provided a lot of different options, as has been said, all very viable, all very important. I look forward to the Camelback Road discussion to understand what the timelines are and what our neighboring cities, what their views are. As that develops, I often see in Arizona, when we do roads or freeways, we do them narrow, then we go back later and have to make them bigger. And so whatever Camelback really needs to be for the amount of traffic, I just... let's do it right the first time, I would think, as much as we understand what it's going to be. Now, on the PSPRS, does the funds go for, like in a big bucket for Goodyear, or is... are the funds attached by individual retirements? Because I under... I think I heard somewhere, like when we've taken lateral transfers, if they come from an agency that's unfunded or less funded, then we take on their liability. Is that true? And we send officers to another agency? They take their good funding with them?
That's a great question. So when we go back to the difference between the plans, Arizona State Retirement System is a state-pooled system as compared to Public Safety Retirement, which is individually rated for each agency. So you are correct in that when... and they've gotten much better at modeling, and they're beginning to be able to show us how the impact of hiring... if we were a community who only hires laterals, you will have a different-looking system than if you're a community who only hires new recruits. So it is something that our own practices as an agency, whether it's police or fire, which are both also individually rated, you know, impact our rates. And so throughout the system, our rates are currently right about the midpoint of the state. So we aren't an outlier, either high or low. There's certainly some communities in the state, like a Paradise Valley comes to mind, where they have a policy of only hiring laterals, and I think their retirement contribution rates are up at like 96% of a salary. Ours are sitting closer to, I think, that 35%. So it is definitely an individually-rated employer program, and as the program's getting more sophisticated, we're finding new tools available for us to help understand the modeling and the impact of our decisions on our rates.
Thank you. That explains a lot. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Wally, did you have any more to say?
I don't have anything to add. I'm just looking forward to the discussion when we actually bring the budget back and then we talk about what we want to include, because they're all good, but I think we need to go with Saraville first. We can't keep telling them it's coming, and it's been... I've been on council nine years, and we told them nine years ago we were going to take care of that road, and we haven't done it. So that's just my two cents.
Any... Bill?
To quote Sheri, I do have a little bit of heartburn. I think there's a big difference between the debt of the pension system and geodet. There's... when you, you know, for the public debt analogy of when you buy a house, you incur debt, and that's appropriate debt as opposed to a credit card, which is that ongoing 20%. So some debt is good, and I think when we geo-bond things, that's good debt for us. The pension system debt on the other side, and I would be... I'm assuming we're going to get these numbers. But that $10 million as the figurative example, what does that do on the general fund side? Where's the... what's the return on the investment for that? I think seeing that will help inform whether that's a good direction to go or not. Personally, I'm not in favor of getting around a geo-bond down the 7.8 on the infrastructure. I don't know that there's enough value in that for us, because I think there are a lot of other projects. We keep talking about Saraville, and I absolutely agree. That's two meetings in a row, Wally. We have been exactly on this.
We're on a roll, Bill.
Yeah. Make sure that's in the minutes, Darcy. We have been talking about Saraville. We have also been talking about Yuma at Saraville.
Yes, yes.
And sidewalks and whatnot in that area. And again, we're in that situation because we allowed part of development to occur without finishing the job from the beginning. In that... with that in mind, Camelback becomes a priority because there's nothing there right now. So let's not let development drive the road improvement and then us have to come back 10 years later and fix it. Let's get it, to Laura's point, let's get it all done right the first time in the size that we need to have it done. So I think there's a varying degree of what we need to accomplish. And I know Camelback is not cheap, and we're not going to pay cash for Camelback. That's certainly... that'll chew up at all. But I think there's opportunities, and those places that we have been promising for years that are going to take some one-time monies that we normally would let development do, and I would encourage us to look at how do we get a reimbursement piece in place for that unimproved corner, if you will, that we would normally have the developer pay for? Is there a way for us to tag a reimbursement piece to that? I'd like to have that be part of the equation, but really identifying what those are. We all know Saraville. We all know Yuma. We all know the... and it's already being done, but the third lane on Estrella Parkway at I-10, that's another example of we're going to let development hopscotch this through. But are there others? Are there, you know, are there other ones that we should be looking at? We've got this opportunity. Let's fix where we've been so that we have a clean slate going forward.
Mayor?
Yes, Wally?
I'd like to add Vanderbilt Farms for sidewalks. They have asked us for years for sidewalks.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Oh, that's the Yuma Park? Oh, I'm sorry.
Vanderbilt Farms, the Yuma, Saraville sidewalks, and that whole thing.
That whole area there.
Can I add? I forgot one thing. I wrote notes, and I...
You go right ahead. That's what this is for.
You guys are going to get sick of hearing about it. Small business assistance. I keep seeing articles about Chandler and Mesa and Tempe being able to offer small business grants or forgivable grants to their small businesses to keep them going. We don't have that plan in place. We... and I'm not sure that the word is out there. I mean, I'm encouraged that the number of people seeking assistance from the city is increasing, but I don't know... A, I don't know if we've got a big enough need, but I also don't know if we've advertised it in the right places for those people to get it. So before we spend it all, I want to make sure that we've got something set aside for the businesses and for the folks that are going to need it. That was the intent of the COVID relief money, and I want to see us use it for that. That's...
Sheri?
Just so people know, the county, I believe, still has money. But if we do something like that, their application for a small business owner is so cumbersome to go through, and all these reports... no, no, that's what I'm saying. So if we do something like this, we need to keep it simple. We need to make sure it covers, not like some of those PP loans covers, where they just cover payroll, but if you're a one- or two-person shop, your payroll, you know, it doesn't do you any good to do that. So if we do a grant, we need to make sure it's simple, easy to do, or, you know, however. It can't be anything that's so cumbersome that you're feeling like you're buying a house. So that's just my input on that. I went through those forms. They're a nightmare.
And is everybody current on what ActDev has been doing and with small businesses and some of the things that have been helpful in other departments?
Certainly, I can give a brief update, however. So our focus has been helping our small businesses access the other programs, so helping them access all of the assistance available at the county, at the state, at the federal level. So they've been very focused on reaching out and handholding through application processes and providing information, doing, you know, restaurant promotions and, you know, small business through the holidays. We've not created a direct financial program, in part because we've been trying to identify what that need looks like, but also because there's all these other dollars available. But certainly, if council wishes for us to put a program together, to Sheri's point, that maybe is easier to use, you know, simpler to apply for, we can certainly make that a staff priority.
I'm not really, you know, familiar with all the grants, but can you use the information on how helpful those grants are and what they are, so we could look at them and see where there's a void on the grants? I don't know.
I think we've got models in the valley that are successfully...
We can look at...
Let's use that as our point forward. That's all I'm saying.
Mayor? I remember asking the city manager how many of our businesses applied and got the CARES grant, and I was very surprised that not a lot of them applied and a lot of them didn't get it.
You couldn't get through?
You couldn't get through.
Well, I know that, too. I know that, too. But then I know we've been handholding them and helping them get through, but some of them didn't want it. So I really don't know how... I don't know how much help they really want and they need. And I don't know how we're going to find that out unless, I guess, economic development reaches out to them to find out who needs assistance.
I think, if I may...
Yes, you may.
You know, to Sheri's point, you know, I looked at that for my own. So I had a 80% reduction in revenue in my business last year. So I looked at those federal programs. The mountain to get through was crazy. Would I have benefited from the handholding from economic development? I'm not entirely sure, because some of the requirements on the federal money, there were too many hoops to jump through on that side. I... and I'm only speaking half-informed, but I think the programs in Chandler, and I think the new one in Tempe, are far easier, and it's easier access to the money, and it's easier... it's employee retention, and it's some very definable pieces that I'd just like to know the information on. I'm not saying tonight we create the program, but boy, oh, boy, I'd sure like to know what they went through to get it. And if that could be a benefit, if you said to a... I'm thinking of a small business owner who said, geez, you know, I would have taken on two employees, or I had to let two go, and so on and so on. Now it's only me and my partner. Those are the ones we want to boost back up. But without knowing where... who actually left, and then are they actually forthcoming with that information as opposed to, hey, we've got this money available? It may... that may be the attraction. I think there's a lot of unknowns, and that's what I'm searching for. I mean, I know ActDev has done a lot of work, and I think that's awesome, but...
Can we make arrangements for someone to look into that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that, you know, one of the things that we're seeing from some of our sister cities is they may choose to put $500,000 or, you know, $1 million aside for a program. And if it doesn't get used, you know, that it's not money that we're spending anyway. It would be made available for our residents, just like with the utility assistance. At some point in time, if it's not utilized, council would have the opportunity to reallocate it to a different purpose. So this is exactly the direction that we were looking for, is to, you know, what types of programs or what money would we like to set aside as we're looking forward to programming the next budget?
Information. We could go on forever if we, you know, and talk about this, but we need something substantial, a model to look at. Yes, Sheri?
Yeah, I agree with what Bill said. I think that's a good idea. It's like, and then maybe whatever is allocated, we have also those other community programs. If we don't have that big enough, because there is a lot of need, there was something that just came out that, you know, whatever... large people are food insecure right now, more than you would think. And like, I'm with Bill. My business is just, woo, you know, and I work another job, too, so, you know, we just kind of make it work. But those programs that the federal government, they were geared towards, a lot of times, your larger restaurants, your larger places with more employees, your mom-and-pop stop, where maybe it's like the little, you know, smoothie place on the corner where mom and dad are the ones working, and maybe they have one employee or a couple kids that come in from high school and help work. There was so much paperwork, and then there was the Economic Assistance Disaster Loan that because all the money was eaten up with the PPP loan originally, there was like nothing left for the real small businesses. And even the second round that came out, it's just so much paperwork. I was on the phone just trying to get ahold of someone in my bank to see if we qualify, because I'm going through this, my taxes for the last four years, and it's tough. So just something out there to help our smaller business, not our chains necessarily, you know, and those type of businesses, but some of these smaller mom-and-pop...
Be a small business.
Yeah, those small mom-and-pop local businesses, like the bagel store, the, you know, coffee shop, you know, that really need that help there. I think that's what I would like to focus on, and keep it simple. Excuse me.
Yeah. Joe?
You know, I think there's a value in taking a look at their program, and I'm even wondering with... you know, to me, it's good news and bad news when it comes to the expanding this eviction or foreclosures, because the problem's going to be, this thing's been dragging on for several months, is they haven't addressed the issue, what's going to happen, when that thing comes due. So I could see even possibly, what the Vice Mayor's been talking about, is even some grants possibly, you know, to help the small businesses that could be going through foreclosures or whatever to try to get them back on their feet as well, as we've got to figure out on the residential, because I worry what's going to happen when this thing goes away. You know, I mean, you keep putting it off, and what's about six, nine months now it's going? And I don't think they've figured out how to address that specifically when that decides, okay, game on, then what happens? You know, so, yeah, I think there's value in taking a look at that and seeing how their program work, what's included in there, and maybe have streamlined it. We've got some money we can set aside to help our residents and our businesses, so it's worth looking at, I think.
All right. Are we finished?
So if... So we can... Mayor, may I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
I just wanted to recognize Lori. This is her last meeting with us, and so I know some of you had made some nice comments, but this is our last official presentation. She is retiring, and it is very bittersweet. We're very happy for her, but we're going to miss her steady hand and everything that she's added to our organization during her tenure. So we wish you well and appreciate all of your service.
She deserves a big applause.
Thank you. It's been an honor to work with all of you. It's been... you're a wonderful team to work with.
All right, so I think we're ready to go on to the next item. Okay? All right, the next item is the Police Department Operation Overview. Chief of Police Santiago Rodriguez, Deputy Chief and Deputy Chief Police David Farrell. Deputy Chief and Deputy Chief Police David Farrell will present. Oh, yeah. Okay. The council is asking before you start, could they take you five minutes? And so, go ahead. All right, yeah. Sorry, I brought you to the dais, and then I interrupt you, so.
And we want people to be successful. So in today's world, not only am I looking to grow our department, but I'm also looking to grow that leadership within our department, and that's by allowing our own department to grow from, from the inside out. To talk a little bit about when it comes to the vision of my police department here, and I would like to say that, you know, I want to provide the best professional services out there for our citizens, but at the same time, grow that leadership component inside and be able to foster those, those relationships with our staff, to grow them forward. I can say that we have, and I stand behind our most wonderful men and women at the police department, and know that they provide exceptional service each day. And as we get into our PowerPoint presentation, not to steal from the slides, but you're going to see some of the amazing work that is done out there. And some of the things that I'm focusing on right now, with the help of Deputy Chief Farrell and Deputy Chief Mercy, there are some key points, and those key points are to talk about and focus on what we do as a police department. We arrest people, there's apprehension, there's suppression, there's crime, our crime prevention needs, but there's also a community and outreach component to the police department, especially more now than ever with what's happening in the nations. You know, I see what other chiefs are dealing with in other police departments across the nation, and it is completely opposite of what's happening here. We have a great support from our community, and they bring things to us, and they tell us how wonderful our police department is, and how they, and how they believe in us. And I sit back and think that there are other police chiefs across the nation that have the complete opposite and are dealing with, you know, protests that turn into riots, things that happen for them, you know, where their officers can't even sit down for 30 minutes to enjoy a meal because they get accosted or they're, you know, ambushed and so forth. So I'm definitely very proud. With that, community engagement and outreach, well, let me back up a little bit. Let's talk about apprehension, suppress, the suppression and prevention of crime. I believe that we need to use technology to our advantage right now, because of what we've learned definitely with the pandemic. There's new technology out there, there's new ways of doing things, but with that comes training also, and advanced strategies, obviously, to, to suppress and prevent that crime. I am here to tell you, though, it's not about arresting people in citations all day long. There is education out there, there's a component, and our officers are very good at what they do. They judge the situations for what they are. They show compassion, they show empathy, they take the totality of the circumstances, and they make the best decisions that they can make based off of that call for service that they're on. Now, let's move on to community policing, transparency, accountability, police legitimacy, as I feel that they're all very important, and they're, they're at the top of our list in the office of the chief. I do want to continue the proactive community policing programs that we have, but we need to be innovative because of what has happened with the pandemic and kind of having our hands tied. Community policing has always been getting together and dealing with either situations or talking about new programs to put together, and it makes it very hard during this pandemic time. But I do want to focus on both adults and youth programs, because I think it's very important that the youth is our future. Those are our next police officers, firefighters, you know, doctors, lawyers, and so forth. It is very important to be transparent, are transparent and maintain the mutual trust. I do believe in that in our community. For many of you on council, and some of you I've worked with out in the field, but for many of you know that I've been here almost 23 years, and not only am I proud of our police department, but I'm super proud of our city, and I'm very passionate about our city. You know, when I first came here back in 1998, was not to become a police officer, was to ride along because my wife was pregnant and I was looking for a place to live, and I wanted to get out of Phoenix, and I was looking for that quality of life that I found here. So I did come out, ride along, I asked a few questions, and before you know it, I went home with a reserve application, because that's the only way you could get hired as a police officer here. You had to be a police reserve officer and show who you were and earn who you were, and the testing only happened internally. And for that, I'm grateful because of the great quality of life that I've gained for not only me and my family, and I've never looked to move out of Goodyear, because I do think that this is the place to be. Practicing the golden rule, I do believe in treating others as you would want to be treated. You know, not only do we have internal and external customers, but those people that we arrest, for whatever reason, are our customers also, and they need to be treated with respect. You know, we are put here to do a job, and that is to enforce the laws and to maintain the peace and protect the rights of those that we serve, but we can do that respectfully and in a way that we can mitigate fights and things of that nature where officers are, are affecting those arrests. That is how I judge our police legitimacy. I'm always looking to see, when we arrest somebody, do we have to fight somebody? Many times, we don't have to fight. That incident is cleared. As many times, you know, when I send you emails, I'll put in there that that person was taken into custody without incident. And that is to share with you that our officers are doing a great job out there, and they're doing the techniques that they're taught to mitigate those injuries and so forth as they happen. I also want to talk about hiring and training. I do believe that that is very much at my top of my list, is hiring and training our officers to be the best that they can be out there and to serve our public. And last but not least, caring about our employees and their mental health and their wellbeing is very important on my list. So I'm hoping that gives you a little bit of my vision and what's going on. As you know, and for many of people that know me, I can talk for hours about here about, you know, the vision that I have, and the dreams that I have, and the passion that I have for our police department. So with that, I want to introduce Deputy Chief David Farrell, who's here with me as our new deputy chief. And I want to give him the floor just for a few minutes to introduce himself, and then we'll get started on the PowerPoint presentation and get into the, the, the rest of the slides that are available.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As Deputy Chief Rodriguez said, I would just take a like, like to take a couple of minutes to kind of introduce myself. Due to the COVID situation over the last few months, since I've come on board, I have had limited opportunity to reach out and, and meet with you on an individual basis. It's unfortunate, but I think that as this, as this clears up, we're going to have a lot more opportunity to go ahead and do that. Just very briefly, I'm a third-generation law enforcement officer. Grandparents and my father were both in law enforcement. I originally hail from the great state of Illinois, and worked, I worked in a suburb of Chicago for approximately 20 years before making the leap out to the Great West. I've been here for roughly four years, worked with, for a few years with our farm team in Peoria before coming over to Goodyear, as many others have. Lots of different experiences, both operational and administration and command. I feel I bring a pretty well-rounded background to the department, and I just want to convey to you how excited I am, not only to be here tonight, to be able to talk to you about what the future of the police department looks like, but to be brought on as part of the leadership team with the police department here in the city of Goodyear. I think that we have nothing but opportunity in front of us, and I look very forward to, to being part of the next decade or so of policing here in the city. So thank you.
Well, thank you. We look forward to having those opportunities to sit down and talk. It has been missing on all of us with everybody we come in contact with. So it is a void, and it's always unfortunate when you happen to become a member of a community, and when that happens, and it just puts you at, it's sort of the lesser side, because you don't have a feeling about, or, or the direction that they're taking. But anyway, welcome. Okay? All right, Chief, you have it.
All right. So I'll start with tonight's presentation. So we're going to talk about our current state of our department, give you a staff overview. We're going to talk 2020 in review. Talk about some implement, or some changes that were implemented that were important during 2020 and so forth. I'll turn it over to David at that time. He will talk about today's metrics, what the future looks like, and the steps to accomplish these goals and progress forward. So with that, I'd like to start with the current state of the department. It's progressive, and we hold our city core values in high esteem. We continue to be transparent with our community, building public trust and police legitimacy. We also enjoy a great rapport with our community, and the many members have provided great support to the department during these unprecedented times. The men and women of the police department are highly respected and valued by our wonderful community that we serve. Now more than ever, we continue to promote the philosophy of community policing, which has been a challenge due, due to our pandemic. We have been innovative and adaptive to the challenges presented due to COVID-19 by practicing social distancing and limiting the size of groups, maintaining the use of masks, and putting all possible safety measures into place when we're out there. When this is not possible, we use certain platforms like Zoom, Microsoft Teams. We also use our social media platforms as a way to communicate. That seems to be very popular for us right now, is to be able to communicate through the different social media platforms out there to get a message out, either it being a resolution to something, being, you know, proud achievements of, you know, some of the letters that we get for some of our officers, or just awareness and, and education posts out there. Many of you follow us. I know that you probably have seen a lot of the, the posts out there, but that is a great way during this time to communicate. But I can tell you that staffing has been one of our greatest challenges, not only with... Not only with. Officers and as you'll see here in slides to come that are currently out on some form of leave. But also with some of the vacancies that we've had in our staffing. We'll provide a little bit more on staffing as we go on. There's a slide just for that. So this slide, we're gonna give you a staff overview. As you can see, our two deputy chiefs have been pinned. The office of the chief is whole now. We also have an administrative assistant that, uh, replaced Wanda's retirement in last year. So we are whole there. We also on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one promoted Chip Kirk from our, from a sergeant to a lieutenant. That was a backfill vacancy that we had, uh, with promoting Deputy Chief Mercy from lieutenant to deputy chief. I can, uh, tell you that the staffing shortages that you see there, one lieutenant, uh, six of my sergeants are out. Currently, which is thirty-three percent of the, uh, the sergeants that we have in the department. One detective and five officers. Currently I have three vacant officer positions, two of them which you provided to me. With the mid-year level, uh, the mid-year positions that were just approved, we're in the middle of a hiring process or backgrounds right now. So. I feel that those three vacant police officer positions should be hired here pretty soon. And then one telecommunications dispatcher, uh, that's vacant. In front of you, you should have gotten, uh, some manila envelopes with your names on them. It's going to have hard copies. Of any of the maps that we, uh, show here, just so you can see them a little bit better. You also have the organizational chart. Um, and then also I believe, uh. Uh, a schematic of, uh, Fire Station one eighty-two, the police side there. So just so you have that for information. We'll move on to the, the organizational chart. Here you can see that the boxes in blue are positions that are currently filled, but there is some type of leave, leave associated with that position. The boxes in yellow are the mid-year positions that we're looking to hire right now. So it just gives you a quick overview. Providing a twenty twenty department review, uh, we'll begin with staffing again. So staffing, not only on what you see there, what we just spoke about, but in twenty twenty, we had six retirements. Uh, that happened in the department. And once again, due to COVID and so forth. It was very hard to celebrate those retirements because we just couldn't get the amount of people together in one room and be safe. As the year progressed, we also had five employees that resigned to either start new professions. Uh, or to move out of state to be closer to family. Some of them due to the COVID, uh, situation. So also we have assess, assess some department positions when it came to staffing. In twenty twenty to determine, determine whether a sworn or civilian employee would best fit. An example of that is our nine-one-one telecommunications manager. Prior, it was staffed by a patrol lieutenant that was moved in there to oversee the telecommunications nine-one-one center. However, um, I made changes to bring back a civilian. Instead of a sworn, uh, telecommunications manager. And, uh, we ended up with a, a, uh, Shauna is her name, Shauna Henry. With twenty-plus years of experience that in the telecommunications division, uh, from Paradise Valley. Which is doing a wonderful job over there. Once again, she understands. When her staff comes to her and they talk to her about communications or dispatch lingo. And it seems to be working out very well for us now. She's done a, a great job over there for us. What it did is it freed up a lieutenant that was over there. To actually oversee our high liability, public-facing, um, units. So that would be our K-nine unit, our traffic unit, our hot team, our school resource officers, our community service unit. Before those units were without a lieutenant and they would just report to whatever lieutenant was working at the time. Or if there was a supervisor working at the time for anything that they need. Now they have a dedicated lieutenant that oversees that bureau. Um, and also oversees the budget for those, those units. So training was, uh, uh, somewhat of a difficulty for us. However, our training unit improvised and, and adapted. Uh, many a times in police work, when you do training, you have to go out and show proficiencies. And so anything that we had to go out and show proficiencies with. We just made more classes of and reduced the number of classes to be able to get their Arizona post, uh, credit. And then any classes that could be done over video through teams or Zoom. We, uh, we did those classes either in briefings and so forth where we could. Uh, have the instructors in other locations or we could bring in multiple locations at once for the training. However, I can report that we did get all of our officers, uh, with the appropriate number of credits that they needed for the year. Uh, prior to the end of the year. So the training staff did a wonderful job there. As the year progressed, we, uh, have COVID nineteen. We all know the pandemic. I'm not gonna go into all the details of it. However, like I said, it did hamper almost everything that we did as a police department because we're so used to doing things in person. And being able to be together when it comes to those training measures, whenever it comes to calls for service or certain calls for service. And then we had civil unrest. And we had across the nation, many, many, um, cities and departments experienced this. Where they were calling in their department to come in and deal with either some type of First Amendment speech. Uh, issue or a, a protest of some sort and some agencies having to deal with riots. So with that, we did have, I believe, seven nights of protests. Uh, the largest one being about four hundred and fifty people. Uh, that were protesting at the corner of Litchfield and Indian School Road. In the illustration there, you can see in the upper right-hand corner, that was one of just the corners. Uh, but all four corners were filled, filled and along, uh, along the sidewalk all the way back to the city park. So with that, we had to call in the entire basically department to deal with these issues in case something came up because. We didn't know what was gonna happen. I think as a nation, we didn't know how bad it was gonna get or what was going on. And, um, that took a lot of our resources. However, once again, we took the, the appropriate protective gear. Our masks and so forth and we worked through those, through those challenges. Community policing, one of the staples here at the, at the Goodyear Police Department and something that we believe in. Obviously, uh, with the COVID nineteen, uh, pandemic became very difficult. However. Uh, we still did things through teams. So like my Goodyear, uh, can movement, we have done over teams. I'm proud to announce that our next meeting, it looks like that we, we possibly might do it in person. So I'm a little excited for that. Um, just depending on how much or there'll be a hybrid of in-person and on teams or, or Zoom. We did also manage to do a shop with, uh, I'm sorry, our shop with a cop for twelve kids. Which was phenomenal. We also did a coffee with a cop out here on our green lawn of our police department. As you can see there in the lower left-hand corner. Um, practicing social distancing also, and it was very successful. And we also, um, graduated a class of, I believe, thirteen or fifteen. Uh, citizens academy graduates also. So. Staff is doing a great job with adapting and overcoming some of the challenges or the roadblocks that we've had. And I couldn't be more proud of them because they really want to get out there and get back to, to what was normal and, and so forth. The presidential visit, as you can see there, uh, was also, um, something new. And protecting the, the President of the United States. Staff worked closely. I can say that David worked very closely with the Secret Service and did most of the logistics with that. And provided the support that was needed. He also provided the support that was needed by reaching out to other agencies that helped us. Do this. Phoenix PD obviously took care of all the inside work with the rally itself. However, we were assigned to the Secret Service in a contingency, just in case that we needed to evacuate. Or if we needed to remove the president and his staff from that location and so forth, which was something that we have never done as a police department. However, it went off very well and I can tell you that no arrests were had to be made. Once again, our officers practiced. The discipline, we did have a lot of people, ten thousand plus people that attended that event. However, they did a really good job with, um, with mitigating things and working with people and the traffic and the, and the pedestrians. And then our vaccine distribution came in late December. The PD worked with Abrazo. Once again, David was overseeing the pod distribution. He worked, uh, with Abrazo and with our, uh, off-duty coordinator to make sure that we had the proper security there. To affect, uh, these vaccines being distributed to the one A recipients that were out there. And then, uh, just recently, we just finished another ten days there with doing the second, uh, vaccine. Injection for those one A. So, and I believe, uh, we're currently working with them to do a two or four-day. Uh, deployment, uh, for some of the school districts that are here close by to get their vaccines. And then finally, there's Proposition two oh seven, legalize the marijuana. Uh, this has proposed some issues, uh, with using our current canines for drug sniffs. So we have three current canines that are both, uh, drug and handler protection dogs. And the way those dogs are trained, they're all trained in what's called a soup mix where they have all types of drugs that are inside the soup mix. So the dog alerts on the drug scent. However, because the dog can't clearly communicate with the handler and tell the handler exactly what type of drug. We've now run into some issues with that. Uh, we are working through them. However, as you can see, twenty twenty was quite a challenge. Not only for our department, but I think for everybody. And, uh, staff did a wonderful job in overcoming those hurdles and moving forward and doing the best that they can do. So with that, I'll move on to some significant changes. Um, transparency is something that obviously here at the Goodyear Police Department, we believe in and practice. So not only with our body worn camera program, that's a robust program out there. And us being transparent by every officer from the lieutenant, uh, position on Dan, down wearing a body camera. Uh, we also did a few other things in our transparency programs, which is implement a software called Power DMS on our website. It basically gives online, uh, access to our policies and procedures. And being transparent with our public. So if you wanted to go look up our use of force policy, you could click on the link. Type in use of force in the search bar and it would bring up the policy and so forth. You could look at it. We are currently doing a policy and procedure audit in the office of the chief. So every week, all three of us chiefs get together and we go over policies and go through them. We look at best practices, what is, you know, what is the golden, uh, rule out there when it comes to those best practices? And we either change the policy if needed. However, right now we're going through every policy and as, as soon as we get it ready. And we make any changes, it actually, as soon as we make the changes on our side, it goes live on Power DMS and it's live for the. For the online community to get. And then part of our transparency programs is the Goodyear Community Action Network. Which is a group of citizens and business owners here, uh, in Goodyear that talk about certain things that are happening across the nation. It really started out with talking about our use of force and some of the things that were out there as hot topics across the nation. Due to the civil unrest that was happening. However, um, we have also looked at other things that they have questions about and it could be. One day it was about traffic stops. Another day it was about debriefing an officer involved shooting. Um, but it's our way to be transparent and at least provide how Goodyear does things and how Goodyear prepares for things. Our next topic will be, uh, how the TLO works for us. Um, and how we, we get prepared for certain things. So if we get intel, how do we deal with that? How do we get that information out? How do we get that, that, uh, information to the officers and to the public if needed? Some changes in, in actual processes and divisions. So our professional standards division used to be only internal investigations. However, that division, we have added our training unit and our hiring recruiting unit. And, uh, we feel that it complements it very well. For one, our internal investigations continue on and they report to the chief directly. However, we've added an inspector in there or an officer on assignment to the unit that does inspections and audits. We've done those inspections and audits and have programs in place for our body worn cameras. Uh, they were just finishing an audit and taking a look at our records division. Our, um. Our, our investigations division gets audited when it comes to closing cases and to contacting victims and things like that. We also are doing continual audits with our, uh, property and evidence warehouse where we pull certain samples and make sure that. One, policies are being followed. Two, that the officers are doing the right job and what's there is really there. So, um, that has been a wonderful unit in the sense of just making sure that we're providing that best. Foot forward and that best product forward and keeping ourselves, uh, transparent also with not only the public, but with ourselves. And making sure that we're doing the, the job that we should be doing. It fits well with the training unit because most of the time when we do have internal investigations, a lot of it is not misconduct, but mistakes. And sometimes it's a training mistake. So we can go back and look at train, training curriculums. We can change it. We can add training. If we see that there's an issue. So the internal investigators will work with the training unit since it's the same lieutenant that oversees both. And getting out any training that needs to go out there. And then our hiring recruiting unit, obviously that's very important because we're talking about people's backgrounds. We're talking about people going through certain processes and we want to keep that as discreet as possible. Uh, not only for, for staff, but also for the person that's being hired or being looked at. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Chief Pharoah and he will, uh, talk about today's metrics and finish the rest of the presentation that we have.
Can we hold, but just a moment for, there's some questions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, before we go on, just in case, but. You had, uh, you'd made a, a statement earlier about. Your hands being tied. I assume that was COVID related?
Yes, so, um, when it comes to actually being able to get together, a lot of our hands were being tied in the sense that. Social distancing wasn't allow us to continue the way we were continuing.
So I, yeah, I think that's an important public distinction to make.
Yes. I, thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
And, uh, second, the, the vacancy numbers that you had in one of the early slides is actually pretty significant. Obviously, the three of them are, um, brand-new newly approved positions. So that's really not. Not within a lot of control. The other ones, are those, are those actual vacancies? Or are the, because you're, you said thirty-three percent of the sergeants are missing.
Yes, so they're not vacancies as in the positions don't have a body attached to them. The positions do have a body attached to them. They're either out, uh, due to light duty, injuries, um, things to that nature.
Okay. So, and then you're staffing them with an acting person? Is that how you would do that?
Yeah, some of them are staffed with acting. We do have a few corporals that could fit in the role and help out with that under the guidance of a lieutenant. Um, or other supervisors. And for example, our professional standards. Supervisor Chip Kirk that just promoted to lieutenant. That one, he's there, um, staying as the, the lieutenant, which is also an opening. And playing dual role until we can get the backfill for that.
So with all these vacancies, the public, do they feel that? Are we providing the appropriate level of?
Yes, there's still the, the supervision that is out there. Uh, we are providing that.
So the, the, uh, I, I guess what I'm saying is the community isn't at greater risk because we're down.
Right, there's no greater risk.
That, that's what I'm trying to drive towards. So, um, I, I think that's an important distinction as well that we're. Even though we're experiencing these, I'm gonna say an anomaly, I think thirty-three percent of staff being out is an anomaly. That we're still able to provide the same level of service, the same care, the same protection so that anyone listening to this doesn't. The headline is not, you know, Goodyear in danger, you know?
Yes, and any positions that we don't fill could, are filled with other sergeants at overtime. Obviously, um, they can be filled on days off. Why, you know, picking up those extra shifts and so forth, but. Yeah, so there's no danger, um, or no additional, um. No additional, um, worries, I guess, to put out there to the public. Uh, the squads are being covered by the supervision and so. The squads are being covered by the supervision and so forth. And then also, most of the time, there's a lieutenant running around that will assist.
Okay, I think, I just want to make sure that that's clear to the public. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for clarifying those points.
Any other questions? All right, proceed.
All right, so Chief Rodriguez has given us a pretty good explanation of where we've, where we sit currently. Where I'm gonna take over is talking about where we are today and where we look to go into the future over the next several years. I'm gonna start off my painting this picture with some pretty broad strokes. I'll, I'll paint it with some pretty broad strokes overall. I understand that you all have a pretty good understanding of how the police department works and how we're structured, but I'm still gonna give you this for some background. We currently today sit at 121 sworn positions. Of those positions, kind of piggybacking off what the chief said, 12 of those positions are in a non-work status at some point of some sort. So that roughly equates to 10% of our sworn staffing. And when I say sworn staffing, I'm talking about everything from our patrol officers all the way up to the Office of the Chief. So it's all-inclusive. Due to some of those shortages and some of those non-work statuses, we've spent just under a half a million in overtime over the past calendar year. As a city, we currently sit at approximately 93,000 residents. And this next number that I'm gonna talk to you about, I understand that we, we didn't want there to be math tonight, but there's gonna be a little bit involved. The next number that I put up there is the 1.3 officers per 1,000 residents. That's something that I'm gonna want you to take note of and we're gonna talk about in a couple of different slides as we progress through this. So our staffing of 121 sworn positions in essence gives us 1.3 officers for every 1,000 residents in the city. Just to give you a baseline, over the last couple of years, in 2019, we had 47,655 calls for service, whether officer-initiated or citizen-initiated. This past calendar year, we had just over 41,500. So all we, although we did see approximately a 7.5% decline, I think a great majority of that could be attributed to what we're all experiencing across the country right now. There's just been less people out and about doing things, which leads to fewer auto accidents and all sorts of things. So we're still right on par with where we, where we were in the last year pre-COVID. The chart gives a graphic breakdown of, of how our sworn staffing is situated. The majority of our people you'll see are in patrol. Roughly 45% of our sworn officers find themselves in patrol. That number is, is important because if you look across the country and you look at national averages, the average is typically right around 56% of the staffing is in patrol. So we're a little bit behind that. And those are numbers that we're gonna work on, things that we're gonna look at as we move into the future and things that we're looking at with future position requests. So now that we've talked about sworn personnel, we have to bring back the other half of our department, and that's all of our non-sworn personnel, everything from administrative positions to our communications officers to our other support services. We currently have 50 non-sworn positions, so that brings us up to a total of 171. Some of these positions are currently unfilled and are newly created. Some of the things that Chief Rodriguez referred to in our organizational chart. Some of those positions include the municipal security coordinator, a record supervisor, crime scene supervisor, and another administrative assistant that will be helping us with patrol. Again, we have to talk about overtime because of coverage and because of positions that go unfilled, and we're looking at about 141,000 in holdover and shift coverage overtime from last year. With our 50 non-sworn positions, that puts us at just over half a position per 1,000 residents in the city of Goodyear. So when you combine our non-sworn and our sworn personnel, we're, we're right around 1.8 positions per 1,000 residents. And that's interesting and it's important because of the national averages. Again, when we look at that, we're looking at about 3.4 positions per 1,000 residents. So we have some room for growth. We have some positions that we can add hopefully in the future and get us towards, get us closer to those averages that we see across the country. Next thing that we want to talk about is what the future looks like. As we heard from our earlier presentation this evening, our building and our growth continues to occur. Although we may not see the same exponential numbers or exponential growth, we are still seeing numbers that are in the positive. And that's very good for the city. We have seen over the last couple of years, we've seen approximately 7,000 new jobs coming to our city. Again, we have about 93,000 in population. And our estimates over the next couple of centuries, decades, bring us to the numbers of about 140,300 and 192,200. So it's very clear that our city is continued, is continuing its growth. Despite the pandemic that we faced over the past year, research and current market conditions tell us that Goodyear has continued its pattern of substantial growth in residential, retail, and commercial areas. And all that translates into is more population and more business for the police department in the forms of calls for service, handling people's accidents, thefts, all that kind of stuff. The more people that come, obviously, the busier that we are going to be as a department. More than 4,300 single-family home permits were issued in the last three years. This past year alone, we had approximately 1,700. So again, we're continuing, it's, it's just demonstrating the, the additional growth that we're gonna see. And I picked up on the presentation this, earlier this evening, that we can expect approximately 6,400 single-family home permits over the next four years. So that growth isn't going away. It's gonna continue. Obviously, we talk about single-family homes bringing in three, four, or five people at a time. That's gonna, that's gonna boom our population over the next several years. Furthermore, in, in 2020, we had 6.4 million square feet of industrial space that was constructed. This year alone, we have 10 and a half million square feet of industrial developments that are either under construction or in the planning process. And in the last three years, permits have been issued for 637,000 square feet of commercial development. Again, no secrets to those of you sitting in front of me today, but again, it just demonstrates the fact that we are going to continue to grow. And with that growth comes the need for the growth in the police department. Again, talking about the growth, the recent visit that we had to the Amazon Corporation, that, or the building that just grew up south of our police department. We walked in there and saw the, just the expansiveness and the hugeness of that, that facility. They have roughly 600 people working per shift right now. When they get fully staffed, they're gonna be up to 1,200 people for shift. You're gonna have roughly 5,000 employees there. That building in and of itself is, is comparable to a smaller city that we would see across the country, just working in that small footprint. So we are certainly continuing to bring that growth, as also evidenced by places like Microsoft and UPS and the likes. So now we jump into our staffing. I asked you to keep in mind that number of 1.3 officers per 1,000. Now we're gonna start getting into some, some charts and some trends and things that we see across the country. National trends, we're looking at, what we're looking at on this graph is cities by population and officers per 1,000 residents. Where we currently sit right now is evidenced by the hash marks is in the 50,999. The national average is 1.7 officers per 1,000 residents. And again, we're at 1.3. As we move up, where we're gonna be in the next couple of years, we're gonna hit that next level of 100,000 to 250,000. Again, you'll see those numbers represent 1.7 officers per 1,000 residents. And as the cities get bigger, the numbers get bigger. The Bureau of Justice and Statistics put together these statistics here that you see. With our current population of 93,121 sworn, we are at that 1.3 number. Just to give you some feedback and some idea of where we need to be if we're looking to get to that 1.7 number, we would add, we would need to add 36 sworn positions to where we currently are, bringing our number from 121 to 157. That would put us right at that mark of 1.7. As we continue to grow, by the time we reach a population of 140,300, we would need to be at 238 sworn positions, an increase of 117 spots from where we sit currently. And as you extrapolate that out to 190,200 people, we would need to reach a staffing level of 326 positions, which is plus 205 from where we currently sit. So over the next few years, we're gonna, we're gonna see some growth and we're gonna need to see some growth. Each of these figures that you see up there on the national trends has, has gone up since the last time they did this study in 2013 through 2015. So these trends continue to grow across the country. Our recommendation as the police department is that we increase our staffing numbers to meet the goal of 1.7 sworn positions per 1,000 residents. Some more graphs to look at, and just to give you an overall, again, I said we'll start with some broad strokes as we paint this picture. We talked about national trends on the left-hand side. Across the country, there's some variance. Our brothers and sisters in the Northeast and the South part of the country, they normally experience about two and a half officers per 1,000. As you move to the Midwest, you're at 2.2. And in the West region, obviously, where we are, we see an average of 1.7. Again, the, the goal that we're looking for is to get to that 1.7 per 1,000 people. And then as we look at our Valley Benchmark Cities, there's, there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of spread there from Gilbert and Surprise at 1.1 officers per 1,000, all the way up to Tempe at 1.9. We sit in the low, lower range of that at 1.3 as we currently sit. And again, we'd like to see our movement go closer to that 1.7 sworn positions per 1,000 residents. This will give us, this will give us the opportunity to do many things. Primarily, in an effort to maintain our goal of a sub-five-minute response time to high-priority calls, we want to keep our, our incidence of violent and property crime on the lower level, which we've done an excellent job of doing at this point. We'd like to increa, increase our crime clearance rates, keeping in line with our growing population, which by percentage change leads the valley. We would like to invest in additional resources primarily in the form of staffing. Increased staffing will also allow our department to maintain the level of service currently experienced by our community, including our numerous community-based programs. So what does our sworn staffing look like today? Again, we're at approximately 93,000. We're at that 1.3 mark per 1,000 residents, so we sit at 121. As we move up to 140,000, we're looking, we would need to be at 182. Just, that would maintain our current level of 1.3 per 1,000 residents. We would like to move into the red. At our current population, that would mean 157 sworn positions. And as we go all the way up to 192,000 population, we would like to be at that 326 level. That puts us at that 1.7 per 1,000. These numbers give an estimate of the total number of sworn positions needed. Now granted, this is based solely on population. It doesn't take into account certain things, workloads, overall calls for service, overstaffing, shift relief factors. There are a lot of components that need to be discussed when we talk about this staffing, but based solely on population. This gives you a very good visual depiction of where we would like to be in the next several years. These models of the, of the staffing models are all things that are endorsed by and, and studied by agencies such as the FBI, the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And as we talked earlier in the previous slide, the Bureau of Labor, Labor Statistics. They keep in mind, they, they look at this stuff, they study it on an annual basis, and, and for years to come, they're gonna continue to look at this. We are in a place, we are in a position where growth is gonna continue. And I think, and we would like to see that translate into the police department. We would like to continue to provide the levels of service that we do and even exceed those in years to come. And that 1.7 sworn positions per 1,000 is really gonna put us in a much better position to do that. So what do we do with those bodies? As you current, I, I know these graphs are a little bit difficult to see up here, but these are things that were provided to you, to give you a little bit better look. As we look at these maps, what we currently see on the left is, is how our city is broken up right now. As you're probably all well aware, we currently operate on, on three working districts, as depicted on the slide on the left. What we envision doing in the near future is moving from a three-district system down to two districts, but we would like to break those districts up into beats. Districts, as you can see on the left-hand side, are very large geographical areas that are, that are covered by a set number of officers. And one of the problems that we experience when we break things up into solely into districts is, is if you look on the top hand, the, the top part of that map, we look at everything that's above the I-10. That's one district, and we may have two, three officers working that district. There's nothing that prevents them all from being clustered in one particular area. If we break that district down into smaller beats, we would have a little bit more accountability with our officers and a little bit better understanding of smaller areas that they can cover. The current allocations of resources can be problematic and ensuring consistent coverage throughout the district in its entirety, as I just said, as well as making it difficult to focus on, focus on smaller identified problem areas. By breaking the city into two districts with beats, it makes the officers more accountable to a precise area. It adheres to the principles of community-based policing. And it makes it easier to pinpoint problem areas and trends. Additionally, we are researching the possibility of having separate squads assigned to each district as we move forward with these, with these staffing ideas and programs. So when you compare and contrast the, the beat maps that we have and the maps that we have on the left and right, you can see that on the right-hand side, we have the city broken down into much smaller geographical areas. Each of those would be staffed by an officer, giving them a, a smaller group, a smaller idea or a smaller window of which to, which to protect. Again, I talked about the community-based principles. As you, as you can probably expect, when we put an officer in a smaller area and ask them to work that area on a consistent basis, they get to learn the faces, they get to learn the people and the good people of our community. With that comes relationships. With those relationships comes information. What can we do better? How are we doing? And it gives us a better overall picture of how we're working and how we're operating on a daily basis. So we would like to move from the, the bigger district program that we have currently in place down to the smaller beats. To do that, we need the resources and the manpower to be able to operate and occupy those beats on a daily basis. Furthermore, as we move on, we are taking steps to make sure that, one of the things that drew me to this police department is that we have a vision of being a premier law enforcement agency in the valley. And that's certainly something that's attainable, and there are certain steps that we are taking to try and make that in actuality. One of the things that we've just, that we're very proud of, that we've just moved forward with is a newly formed recruitment team. In the past, it's been kind of, we've, we've kind of undergone the thought process that essentially everyone, every officer is part of a recruitment team. And everybody can put forward the word that we have positions available and what we can offer to those looking to become part of the law enforcement field. But as you may, as you may expect, when we have everybody kind of being part of the puzzle, then certain people have different ideas, they may have different concepts. What we want to try and do is dedicate a team to convey our message and our brand. And by putting together a, a specified team to do that, to, to convey that message and do that branding, it gives us more consistency. It gives us the opportunities to go out and go to the job fairs, go to the colleges, go to the Air Force Base and really promote our message and, and explain to people why we are going to be, why we are currently a premier law enforcement agency. Some of the other things that we've done is, is put together a continuous application process. We just opened up applications within the last week for lateral officers as well as new hires. And the, the applications are coming in fast and furious. Very happy to report that after a week, we have approximately 80 people who have applied for positions with our department. And that's after only being available for a week. So we're gonna have a lot of, a lot of good people to go through and comb through and, and bring the best people to our department. I think that's something that can't be overstressed is that the continued success of our police department is gonna be incumbent upon the proper recruiting, the proper hiring, the proper retention and development of our personnel, which are really our biggest asset and our biggest resource. Some of the problems that you might be aware of with the police department and when we go to hire is that it takes a long time to get through the whole application process, the onboarding, the process of putting somebody, a new hire through an academy, the field training that we experience when they come back. It could very easily be a nine-to-12-month process to get somebody into the front door and onto the street on their own. So it's something that we have to plan for ahead of time and really put these processes into place and have, have people ready, willing, and able to step right into a position as soon as it becomes available. That's, that's the thing that we constantly fight and we're trying to improve that. With these application processes and with this recruitment team, we feel that we can get over that. Moving on, we've talked about people. Let's talk about buildings. Everybody's aware that we have our police operations building expansion well underway. We are undergoing some final review and some final processes to get the actual dirt moved and get the, get the building going. Last, last I knew, we were looking at probably a fourth quarter fiscal year '23 completion, possibly moving into the first quarter of '24, but we are in that, we're in that time window. possibly moving into the first quarter of '24, but we are in that, we're in that time window. Uh, once we get fully up and moving, you're looking at that 18-to-24-month window to get that building going. It's going to provide us, uh, it's going to essentially double the space of our police department. It's going to give us a lot of resources, a lot of areas to give our, our officers a place to, to sit down and do their work and really continue to focus and, and grow as a department. Um, but that building, as we continue to grow, that building's going to be outgrown pretty quickly. We are going to be on pace to fill that building basically when the doors open. So some of the things that we need to look at are future space considerations, future that, that will go along with that growth. One of the things that we've identified as a possibility for us is, thankfully already in place, it's just going to take a little bit of renovation and revitalization. But as you're all aware, we have, uh, Fire Station 182 that's currently in the Australia mountain area. Uh, upon the initial building, that, that building, I believe, was meant to be both a police and fire station. It's got all of the, the groundwork that we need laid for it. It would just take some revitalization to the interior to make that a fully functional facility for the south part of our city. That does a lot of great things for us. It ba- it builds on our community-based policing philosophy. It gives the people in the south part of our city somewhere that they can walk outside their door, basically, and be at the police department. They don't have to make the trek up to center city at this point. Um, and as we continue to grow, we, we need to look at those future, those future areas where we can, we can have our roots and we can lay our feet down. Having the ability to have a station in the south side of the city works to our plan to break the city into two districts, to have multiple squads working at, at the same time, both in the north and south part of the city. It gives the people in, in our community that are, that are south of the river and south of where most of the building is going on right now, it gives them that home base where they can come and they can come in and talk to the police department. They can come in and they can file a report, they can come in and pick up a report. They have those resources available to them in the part of the community where they currently live. They don't have to walk out of their, their comfort level, if you will, to come up and see us in the north part of the city. Um, it provides that ability for them to, to have a police department in their own backyard. And that's what part of your community is, is right, having those resources right there available for you, um, without having to make that trek across the city. As we move on to the next slide, again, everybody I'm sure is familiar with Station 182. It's not a new concept, it's a building that's been around for a little while, but this is the building that we were talking about. This is a building that would give us the opportunity to, within a very, very short period of time, set up shop and be able to run a fully functional police department from that building. It's got, uh, things like the Sallyport, the booking areas, office space. It's got a, uh, the lobby area where the community can come in and interact with our officers. We have a plan in place to have, uh, the windows staffed, just as we do at the north and our, our main operations building. So it really, it really gives opportunity for, for the people to come in and see us in their community and in their home base, things that we're pretty excited about. By utilizing the south district precinct, we will provide the southern half of the city with a fully functional police department in their own backyard. The south district precinct would allow for a dedicated staffed window, as we discussed, where residents could come to file a report, pick up their police report and experience all of the other benefits currently provided at the police operations building just across the street, just across the parking lot. Additionally, the use of this building would be a key element. Our plan to have multiple squads, again, working throughout the city, throughout the day and night. Squads would be able to call this, this building their home base and they would be able to operate it just out, within it, just as we do in the current operations building. Keeping them in closer proximity to the area of the city that they would be servicing, reducing response times. And again, just bringing, bringing a more sense of community to that area of the city where their police department is, just like the fire department, is right in their backyard. This slide is, again, I know it's difficult to read in, in its current format, but I wanted to give you, I wanted to be able to present with you a basic outline of what that building looks like and what we would be able to do and how we'd be able to operate out of it. Again, we have the community area in the front, we have office space already dedicated to it. All the features and, and things that we would need in the brick-and-mortar building itself are mostly there. It's just going to be some revitalization with, uh, equipment as far as IT, electronics, um, computer, that kind of stuff. Refrigeration for evidence. Once we get those things in there, this is a fully functioning building and ready to go very, very quickly. With that, um, I will open this up for questions for either Chief Rodriguez or myself.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead.
Well, I know you had a heck of a year in 2020 with so many challenges, and I want to commend you on how well you handled the civil unrest. And I'm really, um, glad that you're doing the Community Action Network. And I always ask about it, and I also talk to the participants, uh, who are on it, and they are satisfied with the progress that you're making. They are also talking about, uh, your discussions about taking the conversations out to the community, which I think is, is going to be really critical. Um, I know that the community support for you has been very strong. They come to you a lot, they bring you so much food. I don't, I don't know how you handle it all, but they do. And you get the nice notes and things like that. Um, but I am interested in knowing what your vision is for community outreach and engagement. Way back when, when life was a lot simpler and we passed that vaping bill, uh, we were going to do some community education. And it kind of got kicked down the road and then COVID and it never happened. Um, so I, we all know that mental health of people is, is a concern. Uh, I've gone on ride-alongs, I know that, that, um, that's what our officers deal with a lot. And, and of course, they have training, but many departments are talking about different partnerships, um, with mental health providers. And, and so can you talk about community education and, and sort of your view of dealing with mental health issues out in the community?
Yes, Councilmember Laura Kino, um, great question. You're right, we were partnering with not only, um, our officers in our community to do some, I guess it would be community outreach and training on when it comes to suicide outreach, when it comes to mental health, things like that. We're partnering with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. Um, and, uh, the pandemic hit. So we're in the process, actually had a team together, we had met a couple of times. However, um, those trainings are real incumbent of getting together and actually having components in a room as opposed to trying to do it over Zoom or Teams, uh, because we were looking at not only from the adult side as a parent or as a caregiver or as a, uh, grandparent. Um, but we were also looking at, you know, could your child come with you? And then there was separate, uh, a separate training or outbreak, um, that that child could go to and learn a little bit about what was going on too. So that, uh, that is still on my radar. Um, hopefully this vaccine and our world gets a little better in a sense that we can start, um, being together again in those rooms. Um, same thing with, um, the, the stand-up speak-out, um, same thing. Everything's been virtual, however, it just doesn't seem to work as good as having breakout sessions or it being in-person. Uh, like I mentioned before, I do believe in community policing philosophy. It's not just passing out some stickers and, and given things like that. It's a way, um, of life, uh, in a sense, that I am looking at programs that not only would, would be good for our adults, but also for our youth. I mean, we'll continue to do what we can with what we have in the police academy, the teen academy. Um, obviously, our ride-along program is huge. We can't do it now because we don't want to put anybody in that, that position because we know that our officers are going into houses all the time that have COVID. Um, but that was another way of being transparent with our public is our, our wonderful ride-along program where you can come ride with an officer right next to them for one hour or 10 hours, but really get to see what was happening, one, in your neighborhood or in a part of city that you would, that you were wondering about, but also seeing our officers making those split-second decisions or having to make decisions on the fly. Um, so I still have it on my radar. We just need to be a little more adaptable in what we can do right now with, with the technology that we have. Um, and I appreciate the comments on the Goodyear, uh, Community Action Network. It's been, it's been one of the funnest things that I've done in 2020, to be honest with you, is to get to know and meet new people and talk about things. Um, so hopefully that answers your question a little bit in the sense that it's still on the radar. I still want to do those programs, I still want to get out there. However, it does take personnel also, um, to do that. So if that's the level of service that we want, and that's the level of service that I want, obviously because I believe in community policing and the philosophies behind it, um, it's going to take resources and it's going to take additional officers and so forth.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, if it would take additional, uh, resources. So lastly, I don't want to take up, uh, too much time, but, um, the mental health of officers is an ongoing concern. We're getting PTSD cases and things. So can you just speak to what, what is being done to support our officers?
So absolutely, we have, uh, a different, uh, you know, a couple of different things. Obviously, there's the Craig Tiger Act that allows, you know, our officers to have certain, um, certain programs and certain, uh, the, the certain ability to, to have resources and to have resources provided to them per incident. Um, there's also, we have, uh, an app that we share with the 100 Club also. So the officers all get assigned a data phone, the app is, is on the phone. Um, and, uh, we use that app there to push out information or they can go there discreetly to get information to if they need it. Um, but we also have a robust peer support group amongst us, not only on the sworn side, but also as dispatchers on the civilian side. Because once again, um, dispatchers are that first link, uh, to many of those things that happen. They're also the lifeline for the officer on the other end when things happen to the officer. So we have peer support in both, uh, on the civilian side and on the sworn side, the practice. And then ultimately, we have, uh, resources available when it comes to psychologists and, and psychiatrists when major incidents happen. Uh, we can bring them in, we can have debriefs and so forth. Um, the department does a great job when it comes to, if you hear that an officer's been injured or has gone to the hospital or things like that, we immediately start our peer support team. Um, and that's everything from having somebody to talk to or having somebody being able to, um, help a spouse or, or somebody, the family, get to where they need to go to. But everything is simple as a meal train. Um, and we've demonstrated that, uh, just recently, um, in our department, and many people helped out with that. So we do have those things in place. Um, but once again, we also want to allow that employee, um, the discreteness if they, if that's how they want to handle issues, but, yep.
Excuse me, Sheri.
Well, I want to thank you and the whole department for all the hard work. And, um, like Laura mentioned, last, this, last year was tough. Um, and I know it was tough on everybody, and so, uh, we do appreciate it. And I think you can see our citizens do. The way you handled, um, your department handled the civil unrest, um, I don't think people realize how well you all did, that, um, there were some citizens of all races that complimented, um, how well our police department handled everybody, were respectful to all sides. So I, I think that says a lot. Um, with regard to the, the, um, I got two areas of questions. The first one's the, the breaking it up into districts or, or areas. Um, with the Australia facility up there, is that already built out like that? I took a tour years ago, so I don't remember exactly how it's all built out.
So yeah, the, the, the building is built, it has a jail there, it has, you know, briefing room and so forth. Um, however, we've been operating with all of our operations coming out of one building here. And so when the officers get out of briefing here, they go down, the officer that's assigned goes down there. However, as if, as you've noticed, the, what we'd like to do is, moving forward, is break the city into two districts, north and south, and then add beats in those districts. Those beats are going to encompass an officer that will have what's called beat integrity and take the calls for service in that beat and get to know the business owners, get to know the, the residents and so forth. Um, however, to do that, what, what'll happen was, is the police station that's down at Fire Station 182 will act as the south district precinct. Um, and it'll have the amenities that we have here.
Does it have any amenities yet, or I don't remember?
Right now, it doesn't. No, it's, it's there. Um, the beat officer that's down there for the Australia mountain, and then sometimes too with the overlap and so forth, can go there to use it. However, if they make an arrest and things to that nature, they still got to come to our ops building here. Uh, if they have to log in a simple piece of property because they took a case down there and instead of having that property in their vehicle, uh, throughout the day, they have to come all the way up here. So the goal is to get that south district up and running, to have the lobby open during the same times that we would have our lobby here, have it manned down there, and you could go get your police report there or you could go there if you had an order of protection to be served. And you, that would be your station that you would work out of. Now, we're obviously thinking about growth here in years to come and how busy or how big the southern district can be with the expansion of the Loop 303 and, you know, some of the building that's happening down there. So we're looking for that future projection. And then ultimately, as the city builds out in years to come, we would need to look at something in the west district to have a, a west district there and potentially squads working out of that west district also. Because what happens is that officer has to come all the way from, let's say, the furthest district or the furthest area down there, we'll, we'll just say, uh, Cantomea.
Yeah.
All the way to this police department to log something in, into property and evidence, when they could just go back to that one station, log it in. And we're working smarter and not harder in the sense that property and evidence would then go pick it up from the refrigerator there, from the locker, whatever, and then they would take it to the property and evidence warehouse. And then, um, the chain of custody would continue with, with that piece of evidence.
And, and that is one of the concerns with the people up in Australia and Cantomea is it grows further back, that it, I know we always keep an officer up there, but if that officer has to leave, then there really is lack of coverage or it takes a lot longer for someone to get back up the hill. Um, so I do appreciate that. My other question is the 1.3 to the 1.7 staffing, is there a phasing, because you said it takes up to a year to get someone up and running, actually, on the streets? So is there a phasing in plan to, to work us to that number? Or do you, do we have a plan on that?
So yeah, what we would do is, is work on that. And when it comes to the hiring recruiting part, you're right, it takes... Right now, it's 20 weeks at the police academy, but I was just advised that Arizona Post is going to extend their curriculum and there might be a couple of weeks added to it. Um, probably a lot to do with maybe some of the mental health stuff and things like that. They're updating their curriculum, I believe it's 580 hours right now or something close to that, but they're adding some curriculum to them. So if we send somebody to the academy, would be 20 weeks or so, and then another 16 weeks in, in FTO or a field training position. So it does take some time from the startup background to getting somebody through an academy and then out into the field. Uh, we would intermix it with lateral positions also, um, because we want to time it perfectly for our field training officers not to get burnt out. Um, so they would have some, some rotation and some rest in between. However, the goal is, and my goal is, to provide new, um, opportunities for our community to become police officers. And it's not just about hiring lateral, lateral officers. Somebody gave me the opportunity and it was here in Goodyear to go to the academy. Um, I would like to do the same thing in, in today's day and age to allow people that are graduating, people that are, um, coming out of the military or just somebody that wants to become a police officer, to give them that opportunity within our community to become a police officer where they live potentially and, you know, and, and service their city. So it's a fine balance in both lateral and, and new hires.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering if there's like a, a phasing plan to get to that goal.
Right, so...
I, I do appreciate all your hard work, so thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Bill?
So I, um, just a couple of notes on these last couple of topics. Um, most everything that you talked about, uh, from the mental health perspective was reactive. Um, I'm hoping that there's a proactive component of this as well, uh, since it is, I think it's reached epidemic proportions. The, uh, PTS claims, um, that are being submitted for pension, it's way too late at that point. We can get to these folks early on, and I think the military has had a, um, kind of a... We can get to these folks early on, and I think the military has had a kind of a change in their direction as well. So I would hope that we would explore some proactive measures rather than after a significant incident or that we're doing something proactively. You mentioned about a West District, just generically, and this kind of is, I think, for everybody. Is it too late to consider doing something at the 188 Fire Station? That's a rhetorical, I mean, you could throw it in a report. You can answer it now.
Yeah, there's actually quite a bit of land there, so I I think that 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 could be a possibility.
Okay, so I just kind of throw that out there. And then I do have two requests for information on this that we can get later. First is, what is the timeline for the second phase of the PD Ops Building construction, scoping, design, construction, and occupancy? Chief, you mentioned a couple, third quarter 2023 or early 2024. Are we in the design period now? This can be later. I don't, unless you know it.
I think she's got some information right now.
So I had Troy Tobias and the project manager come tonight in case there were any questions in reference to that, but I'm hoping that he might be able to shed some light on that or submit.
Hey, Troy?
Hello, Councilman. My name's Troy Tobias. I'm a project manager. I'd answer your question, Bill. Construction is anticipated to be completed FY 23, quarter four, so.
Excuse me, can you take your mask off? I can't understand you.
Or speak right into the mic, because I can't hear you.
Yeah, you got to get into the mic, please.
Is that better?
No, closer.
Closer to the mic.
Leave the green light.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
That's much better.
It's better now. Sorry, I haven't taken my mask off in so long, I forgot I had it on. So currently, we're looking at completing the design FY 22, quarter four, and construction FY 23, quarter four. So basically, in the in the spring.
Are you in design right now?
Right now, we're revising and updating the programming.
Scope?
Programming for the design. We just started that today.
Okay, so we've already scoped it, now we're talking about design?
We we call it programming, so we're kind of figuring out where everybody's going to sit and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, I think I got my answer.
Yeah.
So it's 24, he's saying?
Yes, spring of 23 is what we're at right now. So the program will be done spring of this year in '21. Design will be done spring of FY 22, and then the construction will be done in spring of '23.
Year to design, year to build.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then and then at that time, we'll be FF and E, and there'll be some other IT related things that'll go in the building.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Didn't want you to come for nothing. And then the last thing, which I know is going to take research, and I'm just pulled a number out of the air, out of, since 2015, how many positions have we added to the police department? And what percentage of all positions does that represent? Because we've, you made some reference to the number of staff and blah, 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 and I think it's important for us to be reminded of what we've done. Sworn versus civilian, you know, that kind of thing, percentages. So I I always laugh when when Councilmember Pizzillo repeats his mantra about enterprise funds paying for themselves, blah, blah, blah. We hear that every single time we talk about enterprise fund. So this is my opportunity to repeat myself, particularly for Chief Pharoah, who's not heard this lecture before. You presented a lot of data and a lot of information tonight, and that's all that it represents is a lot of information and a lot of data. And in the arena that I work in, we have to answer the question, so what? What does all of that mean? And that's the difference between information and knowledge, and I'm going to end my my repeat right there. So what does it all mean? Turn it into knowledge for us. What is, how do how do we get there? And I think, local government wise, the best way for us to get to the gee whiz part or the so what is through performance measurement. So and you acknowledge that the information that you gave tonight was only based on population, which doesn't tell us how that's affecting what's happening in our community. Goodyear, historically, for those that remember, the infamous Matrix study, which gave us all population based numbers, staff revolted against the Matrix study because it wasn't an accurate representation of what was happening across the entire city. And rightfully so, because that's not a good measurement. Just ratio of population to staff is not a good ratio. We have this discussion every year at budget time of the number of employees per thousand overall, and it's not representative of what we're trying to accomplish. So tonight, we heard from PD, here's our number per thousand. What does that represent? How much proactive time does that does that represent? How much, what does that do for the crime rate if there were 10 more police officers on the street? What can we extrapolate that to mean? That means something to me as we go forward. So I think in hearing this information down the line, it would be very helpful to look at what performance measures the PD is using to make determinations for staffing based on something other than population. If you looked at the population chart, we're at 1.3, which we're third in the in the row. If we go to 1.7, we're almost near the top. And cities that are larger than us, Gilbert, Scottsdale, I think, were a couple of those that were a little larger than us, are actually lower in police officers per population. So in comparing that, what are we talking about? Crime statistics and that? I mean, there's a bigger picture than just than just that. So I want to, I think, encourage the data to come in in a different story so that we can do it based on something other than population. I don't know that anybody doubts that we don't need more officers, but there's a certain point where you can get to what's the right number. And the there's the old adage about the the quartet effect. Oh, an orchestra plays music, but there's like 100 people in an orchestra, and you start whittling that number down. Four people play a really good sound, but a three person band can play music too, and so can a one man band. The music isn't very good with a one man band compared to an orchestra, but somewhere in the middle, and what they've found out over time is a quartet plays the right, it's the right number. That's what I'm searching for. Help me to understand so we can get to that without just using population. Does that all make, I mean, that's kind of where I'm going. So it's about performance measurement. It's about it's about data. The fire department uses unit hour utilization, how long is a company tied up? That's good data for us to understand. So it's not just based on population. I think we've been super supportive over the years. We want to continue to do that, but we want to be doing that responsibly, at least I do. So thanks for entertaining me.
Wally?
Thank you. I have attended, I don't know, maybe 25, 35, 40 open forums with National League of Cities and police chiefs and police departments from all over the country. And when I tell them the amount of officers we have on, actually on staff or sworn, they cannot believe we are doing the job we do with so little officers. And I know our our situation is different than a lot of these cities because some of them are smaller than we are, but they have an unrest that we do not have. And I understand where they're coming from, but there seems to be a push that they want the federal government to do more funding for police departments all over the country. Now, if the federal government wants to give us money for our police departments, I think that's a great idea, but I don't want it to be a match where we hire officers and we have to, we match it, and then we have, after the match is gone, we have the expense of them unless we're going to start from scratch to hire these officers. I know we need more officers because when we have an incident, we have one officer in a car, and we have a severe wreck at Bullard and Van Buren. We have eight police cars there on scene because we've got multiple injuries. We've got a, I've I've seen it so many times, and we're pulling all of these officers from where they were. So if we have another crisis someplace else, we're going to be calling in officers from Buckeye or Avondale to help us because we don't have enough officers to cover because we're so, we're like 10 miles wide and 120 something miles long or 19 miles long, and it's such a weird configuration. It's hard to be in, you know, you don't know where the crime's going to happen, so you don't know really where to put everybody, and you're moving around like crazy. I I think the 1.3 is coming nationally, truthfully. It's from the figures I can remember. I'm going to have to go home and do my homework now because I've got books that I was given from some of these meetings that I have gone to, when we've talked about expanding the police presence in the communities, what community policing means, how we're going to get our community involved. And I think your suggestion of opening a station in Estrella is very wise, and it's something that we should seriously consider doing. I was on the Public Safety Committee for this city. I'm I'm embarrassed to say, I think it was 2005, and we came back and said, we need a police department where we have all of our police department in one location. And here it is, 2021, we got half of it there, and we're still another four or five years out till we get it put together. So I think that's going to help our processes when we have everyone in the same building and we're able to to just, you know, your briefings, I mean, you've got chief in one building. I'm dropping my drugs off there, and, you know, it's just, it's just, the new building's beautiful on the bottom floor. I can't wait till you get the second floor done, and I'm in a hurry to do it. And I've asked every year during budget, please put this as a priority. But here we're coming with our civic center. Here we're coming with our our recreation center, and Lord knows we need those, so let's keep this building on track and not let it get sidetracked for your building, and let's get it finished and get it finished as expeditiously as we possibly can if we can afford it. I like your suggestions also about opening the station up. I can remember all of the budget sessions we told fire, we wanted a room for PD in every fire station in this city, to have a room or have a location that they can go in and write their reports and get off the streets rather than doing it in out in a parking lot or something. And I know the Estrella one has the room for them, but, you know, I'm I'm concerned now that we haven't had the conversation about all these new ones that we are building now that are opening, and there's no no allocation to PD at that time. And so I think we need to be more aware of helping you have a location the way you're spread out in this city. And you need a place that you can go to a computer, and you need to sit at a desk, and you need to file reports. But like you say, the evidence locker is down here, and you're up there, and you've got to arrest them over here, and the jail's over there. I mean, our officers are spending, how how much time is in the road just getting to where they're going? So I understand your concerns, and I do, I'm absolutely in favor of giving you more officers because the bad crime is coming towards our city. We're hearing about it almost not every day, but the violent crimes are coming our way, and we just need to be prepared for it because they're coming from out of our city and and doing the crimes, and we we need to be prepared for it and have our own officers on the streets.
Wally, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. And gentlemen, it was well received, some figures and information I was not really aware of. It's been some time since we've had this, and I will say, and that when we got on the council, that that was the department that was not moving and was understaffed and under as far as the economics of it. So it's been a catch up, and we're not there for sure. And maybe we've had a lag now and we're going backwards. I don't know. But tonight was very, very helpful. And so I'm sure that we'll be discussing this in more detail. So thank you very much for the presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give them a moment. And so just before we're going to be ending this meeting, we have another meeting, okay? But during while they're clearing their tables, does any comments from the council to, okay? Does the city manager have anything you want to say at this point?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Then where there's no further business, I'm going to adjourn this, and we're going to go right into the next meeting, then you can take a break, okay? So this, no further business to discuss this meeting is adjourned.